Okay, I'd like to call the first of tonight's two meetings to order. This is a public hearing to consider an ordinance amending City Code Chapter 3 for a G2 liquor license. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Jacobson.
Here.
Mr. Madigan.
Here.
Ms. Marlin.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Smythe.
Here. So, this special hearing is to consider ordinance number 2015-05052, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 343, increasing the number of Class G2 liquor licenses for Lacy's Place LLC, doing business as Lacy's Place at, and this is correction, 110 East University Avenue. Is the suite number the same? Uh, Suite C, yeah. So, the notices were correctly, well, I think the ordinance has just got the wrong address, but the property boundaries and all that were appropriately done. Is there anybody here to speak on this particular matter? This is a public hearing considering proponents or opponents of this special G2 liquor license. Please step up.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Oh, Mike?
So, as a local liquor license holder, state law precludes me from participating, so I shall recuse myself.
Please. If you'd state your name for the record, I'd appreciate it.
I'm Jim Razner. My daughter and son and I own Poe Boys Restaurant in Five Points in Urbana. We're at 202 East University. We're just a few doors down from Lacy's Place. I have a couple of things. Also, too, I want to let you know that my family's been involved in business in Urbana for a long time. My dad, in 1957, founded and owned Huey Store down in Five Points in Urbana. Couple of things are bothering me about the gaming halls. One of the things I spoke about at the last meeting and I would like to bring up again is the preferential treatment that's gone on for the gaming halls. In March of this year, the 500-foot ordinances were changed from parcel distance to business frontage distance to accommodate, at that time, I think there were three gaming halls that this applied to. I'm sure in the future, a lot more of this will happen. At that time, this, our specific one that's closest to us, the one's called Lacy's, and I think another one, well, at least one other one, I'm not sure which one, didn't fall under the 500-foot business frontage, so then it was amended still to make it 250 feet. That brought them within, they were then over 250 feet from our business frontage, so that allowed them to have, to fall within the ordinance. The one thing about that that bothers me is, in the future, any new gaming hall, according to the ordinances, still have to be 500 feet from an existing gaming hall. However, they don't only have to be 250 feet from any business that has gaming terminals. So, I mean, there's two things there. The city council changed rules to be favorable to them, and then now, they have, they still have more favorable rules than any other business that would be competing with them. The other part about this is ownership and employment. When you look at the restaurants and bars in town, they're almost wholly locally owned. The gaming halls are almost all out-of-town ownership. Specifically, Lacy's that we're talking about here, they're owned by someone from Springfield. Another one I think probably going to talk about tonight is owned by people from St. Louis and Southern Illinois. Local restaurants such as our, Poe Boys, we usually have anywhere from 10 to 20 employees. Most of them are full-time. These gaming halls will have anywhere from two to four employees, and they're mostly part-time. If you lose just one bar or restaurant for letting these come in, that's about the equivalent of the jobs that would be created by four or five gaming halls, to lose just one restaurant or bar. They do add a lot of tax dollars, these gaming halls, as any of these do. You've seen the figures, you know what these, these machines can bring into the city, and it's been fairly substantial. But it's not just the dollars that come in from the machines, it's also what happens to the rest of the, the economy. And they don't really seem to add much to the overall economic health of a community. And if they run even one business out of, out of being, functioning, then they're obviously going to have a negative impact. One other side effect of this is, our business, as all businesses, we get 34% of the net profits on any given machine. That's what ends up coming to, to us as a business. That stays here in the community. We use it for, to pay employees, to, for business operating, or if we, if we're lucky to take some profit. But that also, even the profit, stays here. It's to us. That 34% to these others, that's, that's not staying here. That's going out. That's going to Springfield, it's going to Southern Illinois, it's going to St. Louis. It's even going out of state, Portland. So, please think about all these things in the future when you start wanting to add more of these, of these gaming halls to the, to the city.
Questions for Mr. Razner? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak to ordinance 2015-552? This is a public hearing on amending the number of G2 liquor licenses for Lacy's Place. Okay, seeing no one else, I'm going to close this meeting.
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting of the Urbana, City of Urbana Council's Committee of the Whole to Order. Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Jacobson.
Here.
Mr. Madigan.
Here.
Ms. Marlin.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Smythe.
Here.
We have a quorum. Next up is additions to the agenda and staff report. I would like to propose one rearrangement of the agenda. I'd like to move items 11 and 12 to be placed under number four on the agenda. And these are the two liquor licenses. We have representatives from the business here, and I would like to handle those two items at the beginning of the meeting.
So moved. Second.
Is that a motion by Charlie, seconded by Mike? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we'll do that. Okay. Is there any members of the staff for staff report? Libby Tyler, Community Development Services Director.
I have some announcements of events coming up. Tomorrow, May 12th, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., there will be a presentation at Pizza M., 208 West Main Street in Urbana, 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., "Welcoming Immigrant-Owned Businesses: A Local Economic Development Strategy for Urbana." And this will be a presentation by the Urban and Regional Planning Department, students who've been studying this over the last few semesters. Should be very interesting results. They interviewed 30 Urbana business owners born from all over the world. So, we'll be hearing about their findings and their recommendations tomorrow, May 12th, 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., Pizza M. On May 14th, Thursday, it's Bike to Work Day. And it's going to be great weather. Okay, all right, okay. I don't want to steal anyone's thunder here, but time to register, and you can go to champagnecountybikes.org. That's all one word, champagnecountybikes.org to register. We have a friendly competition for city staff and city council members in Urbana to retain a trophy that we have, and would appreciate any participation. But as well, all the public are invited to Bike to Work. Go to the website, and you'll see where the stations are.
More. Charlie?
If I could add to that, actually. So, I don't normally come to council this casual, but this is the shirt, and we are doing things a little bit differently this year. We're asking for contributions to the Kickapoo Rail Trail. The shirts have been sponsored traditionally, and, and this year, we'd like to, to really emphasize the, the importance of the Kickapoo Rail Trail. There's a four-to-one match, so for every dollar the public invests as a donation, we get $4 from the federal government. So, that's how you get a T-shirt this year. And there's a slightly better URL, easier one to remember, for registration, cu-bike.org. And that'll take you right to the calendar of all the Bike Month events and, and the various things that are going on. So, now I get to button up my shirt.
And you can donate as well from that website. Lastly, this Saturday morning, we'll have our neighborhood cleanup. This is for residents in our target area who've received a ticket to do a semi-annual cleanup. Two locations. One at, across from King's School in Fairview, and the other is at the Dart Solo Cup parking lot on Main Street, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And we're always welcome for volunteers or people who just might, might want to stop by and say hello.
That's it? Great. Any other staff reports? From staff? Okay. Next up on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the April 27th Committee of the Whole Meeting. Is there a second? Moved by Mr. Ammons, seconded by Mr. Smythe. Any additions or corrections? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Included in this agenda item is a presentation called "Performing Patterns: Transportation Corridor Design Project" by the students in the U of I Department of Landscape Architecture.
I'm actually a professor in the department, and I just wanted to give you a quick overview before the students tell you about the actual work to explain that this was a design charrette, which means we invite outside designers to come in and work with the students over two days. And the idea is not to design for the here and now, but to design imaginatively for the future. And our theme was railway corridors. And you'll see that this particular team, which is one of three, there's just a few of them. Most of them are back on campus studying for exams, by the way. So, otherwise, we would have trooped in with 30. But this was one of three teams that focused particularly on the connectivity between Champagne and Urbana.
And can you provide your name?
I'm sorry.
And introduce your colleagues there?
Yes, I am going to introduce them. I'm sorry, I'm Professor Dee Fairchild Ruggles. I am professor in and also interim head of the Department of Landscape Architecture. And the students who are here from the department tonight are, and if you could just raise your hand, Hannah Cusick, John Whalen, Mari Shudy, Renee Gonzalez, Jingyi Zhao, and A.J. Seuss, who is actually not of this team. He was on another team, but he's here just to be supportive. So, here's the student.
Thank you. Please remember to speak into the microphone. You have a worldwide audience.
Hi, my name is Hannah Cusick. So, performing patterns breaks down the current physical, social, and economic barriers that exist in Champagne and Urbana by uniting the region as one functioning, thriving, performing system. In the early 1800s, Champagne County was covered in 80% Little Bluestone Prairie and 20% wooded grove. This land was ideal for settlers because of the timber availability and in what was known as Big Grove Forest on the presence of Boneyard Creek. The rich prairie soils made the area attractive for farming. As agriculture prospered, population grew, and the railroads helped establish Champagne as a central Illinois city to be recognized. At present, we see the rail lines which run through our site acting as barriers, fragmenting the city rather than bringing it together as the rail once did. Therefore, we propose to use the North-South Rail Corridor to target investment in the poorest neighborhoods of Champagne, use the East-West Rail Corridors to link Champagne, the University of Illinois campus, and Urbana together, take advantage of the existing Boneyard Creek Course as an additional connector for all three existing zones by creating an eco-corridor, which additionally serves to mitigate flooding for the area, and finally, rezone and expand downtown Champagne to promote new opportunities for the Champagne-Urbana region to flourish. All of our initiatives promote social and ecological wellness. This idea centers on utilizing the existing fabric of infrastructure while insisting on reclaiming and reinstating traces of the region's rural and agricultural roots. Some of these wellness and reclamation strategies would include, in the East-West Rail Corridor, introducing a performing system that remediates the soils through urban forestry and a pedestrian greenway. In the North-South Rail Corridor, providing a three-phase remediation solution to bring prairie, agriculture, and grove patterns back into the city. In downtown Champagne, building on and penetrating through existing patterns to create a greater walking and biking accessibility by way of living streets and transforming of parking lots to a programmed plaza. With Boneyard Creek uniting Champagne, campus, and Urbana with a naturalized park system. Our master plan shows how all four of these corridors combined create one cohesive system. Everything highlighted in green on the map are areas of proposed intervention. The following discussion dissects the most prominent intervention, which is the East-West Rail Corridor application, with greater depth in order to explain how it will perform in relation to larger patterns.
Hi, everyone. My name's John Whalen. I'm a master's student in landscape architecture, and I'm going to talk more about, or more specifically, about our East-West Corridor proposal. So, we started off by looking at historically how the city developed and that Champagne once was called West Urbana. And so, we're in Urbana, and Urbana was before Champagne, and we definitely recognize that. But what we also recognized was that this railroad physically connected the two downtowns. And today, we really see that this connection's not there anymore, and it seems like it makes so much sense. And so, we started looking at the existing bus routes and where the major nodes were. So, downtown Urbana, around the university campus, downtown Champagne, and then at Country Fair. And we overlaid the rail on top of this to look at different connections. And obviously, downtown Champagne and downtown Urbana are adjacent to this rail line. And then, we looked at where the rail line intersects current bus lines, so for potential connections, if this does become a tram. And then, we started looking at the site more closely, so how it developed. This railroad was basically overlaid over an existing grid system, and you can see that the way it cuts through the neighborhood. And you can also see, when you compare it to another neighborhood in Urbana that's very well-known for its very green tree cover, that it's very lacking here, and there's a lot of abandoned lots. You have that Ameren site. So, there are a lot of places that allow for potential to redevelop, or not necessarily redevelop, but reimagine adjacent next to this multi-use trail line. And so, that's what we started looking at essentially. Here was the railroad and then all the open space next to it. And part of our concept was to take land that was underutilized, as we saw, so abandon that required remediation and build upon that with the existing green network. And then overlay in that earlier map all those transit connections that would be possible in the future. And so, what it would look like, you'd have possibly a tram on the rail tracks that are currently there. And then, you have the bike path and a pedestrian path on the other side. And so, we would not remove the rail path even if it would not be immediately used. And so, just some images of what that could be used for, or what it could look like. I really liked the image in the top right because this has the potential to connect to a Rails-to-Trails project stretching to St. Joseph's. So, maybe people would bike in and leave their bike on this tram and get to ride it through town and stop off and get lunch or something. And then, we also recognized the different players who would be necessary to make this happen. So, Cities of Urbana and Champagne, MTD, Norfolk Southern, the people who own the rail line, and also the Regional Planning Commission. And basically, we're just trying to challenge the best and highest use of this land. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Aaron?
All right. So, first of all, thank you all, because I really appreciate all of the resources that you guys bring, the resources and the energy and everything that you bring to the tape. It was very refreshing. I appreciate it. I'm just thinking about a few things. I'm a gardener, so I like to see the gardens up there, and it looks like, you didn't talk much about that. How would that play into this? What spaces did you see that would be sort of community garden-type spaces? I saw one look like it's near the Times Center, but I couldn't spatially see exactly where that would be.
Basically, this was, the charrette was a one-day of a design conceptual development, so we haven't necessarily gone through and designed every exact parcel of this. What we were looking at is that tree canopy and thinking, how can we restore that? And so, most of these large green spaces would be for growing trees. The trees could be used then, or transplanted into this neighborhood for street trees or park trees or other places in Urbana that need to maintain that really dense tree cover. But also, the spaces could be used for playgrounds, community gardens, very flexible in that sense.
And the, I'm, I'm asking these questions like you guys have really studied this thoroughly. I just want to throw it out there, though, because I'm, before Charlie or Dennis dissected, I thought I would help out a little bit. The safety aspect of, like, walking or biking right next to a rail that is still in use, are there, is, what's your response to something like that?
You know, there are a lot of street rails in cities all across the world that do have pedestrian pathways right next to them. This one actually has, yeah, it has a plant median and then a change in grade. So, this is probably safer than a lot of street trams in cities. And there's been a lot of work done to try to make it safer bikes to cross rail lines as well, so.
I mean, I like the idea. I like the rails to trails, hooking your bikes up to the, to the back of the, the train or whatever. Kind of like we're putting bikes on buses and things like that to get you where you have to go to connect the, to the trails. I mean, I think it's pretty innovative and clever. I would like for us to use our spaces to, to be more green as well. I was just thinking about the safety concerns. Sometimes, you know, I don't know, it just feels a little uncomfortable walking while a big train is coming down or biking down there. But I think I would get past something like that. The other thing which was really standing out to me is that early on, when you spoke, what's your name again?
Hannah.
Hannah, you talked about the physical, social, and economic barriers that are broken down. So, of course, I spent quite a bit of time in this area over there. I'm familiar with the toxic site there in that area that Ameren left behind, or I, Illinois Power, whoever it was. And I'm also very familiar with the various different train tracks that run through the north end of Champagne and extends somewhat to Urbana. But there's a tremendous amount of intersection in, right there in the north end of Champagne, several different tracks crossing in that particular area. And even on Market Street, there was like two or three sets of tracks. One of them has been covered up with concrete or something like that. And so, I just want, was just thinking about what, how does this break down these physical, social, economic barriers that you were speaking to, or what you were presenting today?
So, we really only talked in detail about the East-West Corridor. But with the downtown Champagne proposal, what was included was to push the downtown area onto the east side of the North-South tracks. That would be one of the ways that this barrier that divides the city is actually moved eastward, just because a lot of the poorest neighborhoods in Champagne are in that northeast portion, or that northeast corner where the tracks intersect. Another way that was dealt with was with the North-South Rail Corridor proposal. A lot of that was investing in the poorest neighborhoods, proposing plans that would provide a three-phase remediation, so to bring the prairie agriculture back in through some of the community gardens that you saw. So, those are some of the ways that we broke down the physical, social, and then economic barriers.
Ms. Ruggles told you right, that I would probably be really tough on you guys just to introduce you to, to the real world. No, I'm just kidding. I appreciate it. I really appreciate what you've done, and I just wanted to ask a few questions. I'm done.
Thank you.
Eric, and then Dennis.
So, I wonder if you can point to some cities that, that do this well. And actually, the, the one place where I rode a tram that was, you know, connected downtown, recently, that connected downtown to the airport in, in a very good way and seemed to be a benefit to the communities that surrounded it, is Baltimore. I mean, the pictures that you showed, I think, were mostly European cities, but Baltimore is an American city, which is, I guess, at the moment, in the news for other reasons, but, but in fact, their, 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 you know, tram, their, their above-ground tram that runs through at street level is a real benefit, I believe, to the communities through which it runs. So, I wondered if, if that's one exemplary system, or if there are other exemplary systems that one could look hard at for, you know, beginning to understand the economics, and I'll use a word that Aaron doesn't like me to use, the feasibility of such a thing. Aaron, Aaron thinks when I talk about feasibility, it means don't do it, but I don't mean it in that sense.
One precedent I came across was in Minneapolis. They just completed, I think it's a Hioatha Line, and it connects St. Paul and Minneapolis across the river. So, I think that's a really good precedent. I think United States is a little behind Europe in terms of having these transit systems, but I know cities like Portland also have a tram that runs on the street. St. Louis has a similar type of transit. It doesn't run on the street, but it's similar scale, I would say, so.
Dennis?
Yeah, thank you so much for coming. I did see the charrette program that was offered. It was at the end of March, and your group's presentation really struck me because while the charrette was really focused on the train connectivity in Champagne, you took it upon yourself to branch out and think outside the box, and connect, and you were thinking about the connectivity east and west. On a line that's really quite underused, my understanding is that there's only a train on it once or twice, twice a week, and it only services as far as Solo Cup. So, I guess one of my questions for you is, the, the route is, seems to be fortuitous for connecting very different segments of the community together. From the Solo Cup area, you would have the Brooklyn Center and basically the east Urbana and the Learman area. And on the far west part of the corridor, you could potentially have a branch out toward Parkland College. I think the track goes right past the campus. And in between, would you maybe mention some of the points you thought would be connected that would be really useful to the community if we pursued this idea?
I think just looking at this image right here, you can see some of the larger green spaces, definitely the communities themselves, but the parks that also are adjacent to them. So, Spalding Park is a really key point. Also, downtown Champagne, there's a lot of land just north of that real dense block of restaurants right now that is starting to get redeveloped. And so, this transit line could help become a new node there and lead that development. And then, also, the spaces in between these major employment centers, so that it's servicing all the communities that it traverses.
And what do you, one of the, one of the major employers along the line would be Carl Hospital. So, there would be a potential for bringing people from Carl either to their homes in Champagne or to Urbana. What would the effect be if the high-speed rail was introduced in the North-South Corridor from Chicago to either St. Louis or parts south? How do you see this local tram intersecting and using, making that more useful? Or do you see that as an impediment because the line would have to be especially designed? You can just imagine it.
We did look into that a little bit during the actual design process, that this, there was a talk of the high-speed rail for the North-South. I don't think we discussed how it would affect the East-West as much because the tram was something that came into play or is a potential idea pretty far towards the end of the design process and development. But it is being used at least, I think, once or twice a week currently. So, I guess we would have to talk about the impact that this high-speed rail would have on the East-West, definitely, if it started to be used regularly for a tram service.
And if you were hired consultants, um, what would you advise the city to do next?
I would say you need to do-
Hire you to come back?
Yeah, let us go do more work and come back. Uh, but I would say do a real feasibility study in terms of transportation of this corridor. What is its real potential? Um, to me, this is really interesting. It doesn't seem like it's redundant. It seems like it provides a nice new access that could be more permanent than a bus system. Um, and I see it really nicely if, I know there was talks before about turning, uh, the green bus that runs down Green Street into, uh, a light rail, and I could see a nice loop happening there. Um, and if the higher, high-speed rail does come and you can, you know, you just need a designer to make one rail higher than the other. It's not that hard, so. Um, but then it's nice. You can get off the rail and you can go to downtown Champaign or downtown Urbana or wherever you want, and it just makes a nice little commuter network there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Eric?
So, now I am gonna, uh, sort of, it, it sound a cautionary note or a concern. Um, are there examples, you know, you showed pictures of, and I know there are examples, uh, of communities where such trams are really good. They're successful. They do help the communities they run through. They're heavily used. Are there examples where such projects have been built and they haven't worked out? What, what, what are the pitfalls to watch out for?
I'm not sure we have any examples of failures off the top of our heads. But I think one of the issues is that if this tram were proposed, that it could reinforce this idea that the east-west is more of a barrier currently than a place that people can utilize to go from east to west. Um, that's exactly what we would be trying to avoid. Um, that's how the north-south, uh, rail line feels presently. Like it's dividing downtown Champaign from campus, um, or from the rest of the city. Uh, that was something we talked about a lot too when brainstorming was, um, how students feel, especially for, uh, walking from campus to downtown Champaign. It feels like it's so far away and it's really, uh, quite a short walk. And I think most of that is because of the north-south rail line. So, that would be an example, I think, of where there could be failure if this tram, um, created more of a divide between, uh, the north-south and between downtown Champaign and downtown Urbana.
Mike?
So, one quick question. Um, did you do, uh, any kind of research into, uh, what something like this might cost? The billion-dollar question.
You know, in terms of cost, I think we tried to stay positive. Um, the rail is already in the ground, so-
Get elected alderman and then we'll see what you think about that.
Okay, all right, let's, oh, are you not done?
I don't think we got, I don't think we got that.
There are always federal grants that can be applied for, to help support, um, these endeavors.
Yeah, that's gonna remind you I'm a federal taxpayer.
They do have futures consultants, actually. Uh, Bill?
Um, I think if you, if you take the long-term view and think of it as like a thirty to fifty-year project, I think the main thing is to just make sure we keep our options open and, and not worry too much about how much it costs today. But, um, try not, try not to block the access to that rail and make it impossible in the future. And maybe eventually do parts at a time. Um, that might not be a tram, but might leave the option open for a tram. Like turn parts of it into parks or walkways or something. And eventually, I think we'll get there. So, I think it really helps to have this vision. Thanks.
Great. Well, I'll make one observation. I think it's a great vision. And in fact, planners back in the seventies had a vision of using the Boneyard Creek in a similar way of creating a greenway trail connecting Urbana, the campus and, and Champaign. And we paved over parts of that creek and things have altered so much on campus and parts of the creek have been closed off, that that's no longer as viable an option. So, this is kind of a similar vision. And a tram is a very, very expensive, high-cost consideration. But the railroad right-of-way connects very close to where the trailhead for the Kickapoo Rail Trail will be and the potential for the connection between the rail trail and continuing as a pedestrian recreational trail is, is much more doable than, than, um, the billion-dollar tram. So, so it's a great vision. And, okay, we got a, we have another meeting to conduct. Let's make this quick, Charlie.
Okay, well, what I was gonna point out was that, uh, ten percent of rail trail, yeah, is a long, active rail line. And so, it is very doable. Uh, and in communities where rail trail exists through town, not, not the outside part of town, where it exists through town, it becomes a linear park. And, uh, I found them very, you know, when I've, when I've gone through them, uh, both in this country and in other countries, uh, they're, they're, they really are. They're a park. People gather there. Businesses are nearby and that sort of thing. So, they, they are, they, they're an economic driver. And so, uh, you know, we should pursue at least the aspect of getting a linear park uh, from the beginning of the Kickapoo Rail Trail in, at one fifty, one thirty in Urbana, uh, across, uh, all the way to, uh, Parkland. I think that's a, that's a very good goal. And I know the folks in Bloomington Normal would love it to be able to extend the trail, uh, to them. Uh, because then there's further connectivity, uh, to the west. So, it, it's a, it's a long-term goal, and I think Bill's right. We need to keep our options open and keep it from being blocked, uh, and just have it out there. It's taken twenty years just to acquire the twenty-five miles of the Kickapoo Rail Trail. Um, hopefully, it won't take that long to, to, uh, keep this going.
Okay, Dennis.
And I would like to say that, you know, with the proper, um, approach, one might be able to bring the railroad itself into the conversation about providing the tram service as a, a money-making utility which doesn't exist today on a line which is underused. So, I mean, one would have to work with the railroad company in the first place to, um, secure the rights to use the, the rail and to schedule it. But who better to then operate the tram than, you know, the owners of the line? And, you know, offer them the opportunity to make some money on their own property that's underused.
Okay, great. Is this a quick one? Okay.
In, in Melbourne, Australia, the costs of extending existing tram lines were approximately twelve million dollars per kilometer.
Okay, you have your assignment. Thank you very much for sharing your vision. Okay, next up is public input. I have, uh, requests from several members of the public. First up is Keith Rentschler and Paul Tatman. They both would like to speak about Ruby's at five-ten North Cunningham. And you each have up to five minutes to speak. You each have up to five minutes.
Five minutes. He was gonna sing and I'm gonna dance.
Okay.
Actually, I think, my name's Paul Tatman. I think most of you are aware. I haven't been up here for a few years, and there's a couple new faces with Mr. Ammons Brown and my barbecue guy there. But I've been around here for some odd years. Uh, started in business in Urbana, uh, where you got your new, uh, Riverwalk, three oh-three North Race in nineteen fifty-nine. And later moved out on to the Perkins Road area, which we've been there since, so. Uh, later years, I moved into real estate development and, uh, commercial residential and so on. And somewhere along the line, I became Libby's go-to guy when she's got a problem, property or something she needs to get, be taken care of. So, we started back with the, uh, back in the early two thousands with the Florida Avenue Swamp you had at the end of the road, which the city was gonna spend a couple million bucks and, and build a big retention pond. And we came in with an idea of diverting the water to Stone Creek Golf Course, who was having trouble filling their lakes, and developed a subdivision, uh, and extended Florida Avenue on down, which allowed for the development of next subdivision and a couple two or four hundred houses. We also done the, uh, extended Colorado from Fido Road to Stone Creek, built the Prairie Winds, uh, Supportive Living Center, the fifty-five and over active adult and the single-family homes. And along the way eliminated a real problem that Mr. Connolly and Libby had on, uh, Colorado Avenue with the apartment complex. In, uh, about seven, eight years ago, we, uh, took over another problem, child at Five Points, uh, with the old Chief of Line I motel and the restaurant, which was the, not the restaurant, hotel, was a drug house and prostitutes and a lot of police calls down there. We come in with the vision of wiping that corner out and redevelop, which we did with the Walgreens Drug Store and the retail center. Unfortunately, in that process, the economy tanked, uh, the year we was building it. And instead of the fourteen, fifteen tenants we started off with, we wound up with four. And it's been a real struggle with, uh, over the last seven, eight years. See, we had about, uh, between eight and nine million dollars invested in that corner. Walgreens does fine. The retail has been lacking because retail's lacking everywhere. Uh, we tried, uh, we had the four major tenants we wanted with Sprint and American General, uh, Domino's and, uh, Paramount. But over the years, uh, Sprint lost their franchise. American General's closed up last year, merged with the Champaign office after fifty, sixty years in Urbana. Paramount lost their contract with Solo Cup and we, and, uh, Domino's, although they had to lease for five years, paid it five years and never moved into the center, so. So, anyway, we tried the, uh, working with local businesses and even financing to help them get going in business, uh, which forty, fifty thousand dollars per tenant usually lasted four to five years, or four to five months before it is gone. So, we give up on that idea. This past year, we started recruiting, actively recruiting through Sperry Van Ness, successful businesses that can work to, they complement each other plus be an asset to the city of Urbana. Uh, we brought in, uh, Boost. We brought in, uh, uh, Lately. We brought in Express Printing, which was a Champaign business for thirty, forty years, and they're doing quite well. They just expanded into another unit, uh, and, and, you know, there's a couple more we've brought in. But anyway, in our recruiting, we was looking for something like this Ruby's deal. And, and, uh, we made contact. They had an interest. We visited some of their sites. And I'm quite, quite impressed by the operation. It's, uh, kinda like walking into your living room, uh, very casual, comfortable, and attracts a different clientele than the bars and the restaurants would. Uh, I think, as, as he will speak later, on the type of clientele they have. So, I'm urging you to get behind this thing. I mean, we've done our research. We spent a lot of time and money, uh, trying to come up with this combination of business we want. And it's just, you, I was a little disappointed at your last council meeting when he came all the way up here from Edwardsville and, and was left setting and called me up later and says, "What the hell happened?" You know, so, anyway, that's my spiel. Uh, I think he's, he's, uh, they got a great business. Uh, I've been in a couple of them. They, they're very impressive, and, uh, I think it'll be an asset to the city, and I think it'll be a success here, so.
Hello, everyone. I'm Keith Rentschler, um, with Ruby's. And, um, I was here two weeks ago and was probably the, with my wife. It was the first time my wife ever told me I was actually too quiet. Um, I never spoke a word and I really didn't understand the process. So, I think, um, I apologize for not standing up and, and speaking up two weeks ago. Um, but I also wanted to be respectful of the process, and I didn't really know the process, so. Um, with all due respect to the gentleman that spoke earlier and that also spoke a couple weeks ago, um, you know, I would say that, I'm actually from St. Louis. Um, one of my partners is from Edwardsville and one is from Argenta, uh, right outside Decatur. And, um, we have looked around to different places that we wanna invest our money in, if we can, and Urbana was one of those places. Um, we, although we are not Urbana residents, um, you know, we are looking at taking our money and investing it in the community. We're looking at leasing, currently on lease space, and committing to a five-year lease with options. Um, we're looking at employing local people. Um, and again, it's not, I'm not here to argue about little points, but we do employ more than two to four people, uh, per location. I would say it's more like six to nine. Um, granted, most of them are somewhat part-time. But, um, for example, we have three locations right now in Decatur. And what has happened with that is we've got about twenty, a total of about twenty-eight employees that are working for us. And we've also, um, been able to, to promote a couple people to a more of a supervisory position and, um, being able to handle things as they come up for us in more of a district manager and area manager role. And we'd be looking to do the same thing here. Um, in addition to that, we're not just taking the money and taking it out of this community. Lease, employees, um, dealing with local businesses. Um, our business, unlike a lot of these, um, I've heard a lot of names bantered around. You know, we call ourselves a specialty gaming cafe, um, not a poker room or, you know, I've just heard a lot of different, um, names. It was a Poki was one. Um, but, you know, we're an entertainment option. And right now, our locations in Decatur, you know, we're, there's a lot of the community there that truly do love coming into our place. We have a maximum on drinking. We don't sell hard liquor. We, um, we're not a bar. And, and quite honestly, our demographic, I'm not saying that men don't come in and we don't have a wide variety of other people, but our demographic is probably thirty to eighty-year-old females. They don't wanna go into bars. They don't necessarily wanna go into a Godfather's Pizza and say, "No, no, I don't want a salad. I don't want a pizza. I'm just going up here to, to play the video gaming terminals." Um, it's a comfortable, casual environment. No one bothers them. They can sit and do their thing for twenty minutes or two hours, um, not bother anybody and not be bothered. And, um, you know, we offer free sodas, free coffee, and we do have a menu. Um, but we're not competing with this gentleman's restaurant. Um, we do serve breakfast, small, limited menu, but we do do it well. There's some competitors in our arena, and I hope I'm not going over my time limit, um, that, you know, kinda give it a bad name because they say they serve food and then, you know, you go in and they serve potato chips and Snickers bars. Um, and that's not what we do. I mean, we have breakfast. We have lunch. We have dinner. We have appetizers. Um, but we don't have a full kitchen, without a doubt. And we don't try to be, uh, cute or, or creative in how we describe ourself. We are what we are, and if it's not what the city would want in their city a- and it's not a good fit, then fine. I mean, if that's the way it is, that's the way it is. But we're proud of what we do and, um, and we do it really well. Um, the people I've associated in business with, we all have very, very successful business careers in a wide variety of industries. And, um, we feel like we enhance, will han- enhance the local community in the Five Points Center and will run a class operation in doing so. Um, I've got pictures and all the, the other stuff, but, you know, that's, that's kind of, uh, what I wanted to say, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any specific questions? Charlie?
Yeah, Mr. Rentschler, maybe, maybe Paul can answer this as well. Um, one of the things that, uh, two weeks ago, got to thinking about is, should've been asking then, was what kind, you know, when you, this obviously attracts people of a certain demographic primarily to, to an area. What kind of cross-business do you expect? Are you, you know, Paul, you know, you may, you may, you said you've done research on this, you know. Do those people, they, they go to this center and then do they shop the other places in, in the, in the complex?
That's, that is what your hope is, have a, we've got room for fourteen businesses in there and hopefully each one will bring traffic that, you know, the cookie store, for instance, cookies by design. Uh, this will be a natural for them. Uh, they, they picked up a lot since the print shops moved in there, the people in and out of Express Print, mostly from the other side of town. They see the signed cookie store and they're going and buying cookies, so. The other thing that, on this recruiting thing, we're finding like this group is most all the partners are in other businesses too. And this isn't the first one we're going after, so. And we're finding that wherever, you know, the people we're talking to, that most of them are, are more, they're, they're businessmen. They're, they're ventures. And, uh, that's another thing we're going after. We want the second and third dairy line that they're going after too, so. But anyway, the ladies, his main traffic is probably seventy percent women, thirty to seventy. Uh, I think the main attraction's gonna be ice cream on one side, cookies on the other. Uh, maybe pick up some printing in between, so.
So, so, Mr. Rentschler, what kinda, what are the, what are the surrounding business? You've got three locations in Decatur and, and, and so what are the surrounding businesses there?
It's, it's a variety. Um, it, it depends. Um, it's funny because in Decatur, we, we're in three uniquely different- It depends, it's funny because in Decatur, we were in three uniquely different type centers, so it's kind of interesting because you get a really good cross, crossover or different, different examples. And in the southeastern portion of Decatur, we basically brought back to life a center that was dead. And it's, it's got a variety of places that have started to come in there, from beauty shops to nail places, to, actually, that place was already there, it was an education place. But it's a center that really was having a major time struggling, that's now not. And another center there were in a, actually a grocery store anchor, so kind of had a wide variety of places in there anyway, and we've just kind of enhanced that. And really, that's true of our far north location also. But we see a, a pretty good cross, but a lot of somewhat female-centric things, I think bodes well for, for cross, cross-buying and, and shopping.
And then just a comment here, you know, if you'd care to relocate from St. Louis, I'm sure Paul has many fine places he could show you here in the community.
Well, and that, that may be.
He's got a couple partners that are looking at too.
Eric?
Do you, I wonder if any of your experiences pertain directly to the concern that we heard expressed before? So in any of your locations, are you very close to a more conventional restaurant that may also have machines but is primarily a, a restaurant? And do you have any comments on, you know, any sort of interactions there?
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can speak without a doubt to that. I mean, we're, Decatur, for example, that's kind of where we've centered our original locations. I mean, and, and all the gaming numbers, as everybody knows, is public knowledge, so it's, it's not hard to see what people are doing. But, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a very healthy gaming community, I guess is the right way to put it. And although we've been extremely successful in our locations, we certainly haven't put anybody out of business. I mean, there's a lot of people around us that are still doing, continue to do very, very well with their numbers. And we picked in all three locations, one of our locations is close to Walmart, one of our locations is close to a Kroger's, one of the highest shopping Krogers in the area, and one of our locations is kind of close to both, another Kroger's and another Walmart. So these are, these are very busy areas with lots of restaurants. I mean, they're, they're areas that are full. And nobody's going out of business. I mean, it's, it's basically, as I say, it's kind of an enhancement. I think we've drawn more people, we have a campaign, it's Meet Me at Ruby's, and, you know, we have Wi-Fi and, and that sort of thing. And so, I mean, I think it's just more of kind of like, and I'm not saying by a long shot we're Panera, but I'm just saying that, you know, people like to go to Panera and have meetings and they like to have coffee and, and just meet. You know, it's become kind of a, a entertainment hangout, to just kind of hang out and do stuff, but we're not putting businesses out of business.
Yes. Yeah, so I'm just, I'm just pushing on this, not to put you on the spot, but just to make it clear in the public record. So you have, have you, have you, you haven't heard directly from any of the restaurants that you're close to that, that they feel that you're in any way hurting their business?
No, sir.
He said he doesn't have a kitchen, he says he's got to have a micro and a refrigerator, that means you're going to get cold cuts, so.
Bill?
Yeah, thanks for coming back and answering some questions and letting us know more about the business. One thing I think that I'm concerned about is just how, if we should try to control the growth of this and how we should control, we, unlike other communities, we haven't said absolutely no gaming parlor type things, and we're trying to allow some and hopefully not allow too many, but it's, it's hard to control that. I'm curious, you said you have a three-drink minimum and...
Maximum.
Maximum, I mean, sorry.
I made that mistake before.
I knew that.
Didn't come across well.
Well, that'd be an interesting business, I guess. Three-drink maximum, and I know that, you know, bars are regulated and who they can serve when they've had too much. I wonder what kind of experience you've had as far as too much gambling? And we know that maybe five percent of the people that gamble might become problem gamblers. Do you have some way to self-control that or do you have some kind of counseling? We, we have signs that you'll have to put up to just say, you know, Call Gamblers Anonymous, something like that. Do you have any experience or anything, any insight to that?
Probably that would be an extremely intelligent feedback, comeback, probably not. You know, we do have the posted signs and the phone numbers to call, and there's literature that we have available in our training to our employees about what to look for, but I can't say that I'm an expert at locating and identifying what would be a problem gaming person. Our partner, the, the company that supplies the video gaming terminals, there's a wide variety of competitive companies in that field also. And when I originally got into this, I chose to partner with somebody that I felt could provide me as much knowledge as I, I could, I could gain because I didn't have a lot. And although I'm a UNLV graduate and I did major in hotel and restaurant and casino management, I, I, this is my first foray after years of doing other things into this. And Illinois Gaming Systems is who we partnered with, and they're out of, right, well, they're out of Naperville, but originally, they're out of Oregon. And the states of Oregon and West Virginia preceded the state of Illinois in having, doing something like this with video gaming terminals throughout their state. And they've been doing that for in excess of fifteen to twenty-five years. So they have a lot of experience, it's different than Illinois. Illinois is much more locality-centric, you know, everything relates around the liquor license and the local municipality, whereas in a state like Oregon, they just go directly to the state license and, and that's it. So it's a much different animal. But I've learned a lot from them and, and I do ask questions and listen to the answers on things like what you just asked. I mean, have you dealt with gaming issues? And I tell you, it's just something that, in the answers I've gotten from them, it's, it's a very rare situation that they actually get involved with seeing somebody really skews the language, maybe not a better way to put it, but, you know, kind of going down the toilet in front of your eyes. So I, I, I've, I've asked the question, I've listened, but I certainly cannot say that I've had experience or I'm an expert at the, at the answer.
Okay. Yeah, thanks. I think it's one of those things that people hide well, so it's not real obvious until they don't start, they, they don't come anymore because something, you know, they...
Right.
Something financial happened to them or something. So in your letter, I noticed you said you plan to spend two hundred thousand dollars on the build-out and opening costs, something like that. Was that just for this location or is that for all your local locations?
That's, that's basically how much it costs us to open a location, somewhere in the hundred and fifty to, to two hundred, just depending on different variable costs that, that we end up going through. But I'm talking about everything from plumbing to carpentry to flooring to electrical. And, you know, we have a nice stone wall build-out within our centers and, you know, then you get into opening food and beverage costs and et cetera, et cetera. So, I mean, it, it, you know, it's not a, and again, this is going back to what I talked about earlier, when you talk about some of the competition in any industry, that doesn't do an industry any good. We have them too, obviously, but we're already a little bit behind the eight ball because everybody's, you know, in fear of this industry like we're, you know, the next thing to a prostitution ring. But, you know, these people that, no, we're not. But the people that I'm talking about, you know, it goes back to, you know, they're, they're building out thirty and forty thousand dollar places. And, you know, they're putting up a partition and they've got a couple rolling chairs and, you know, boom, we're in business. And that's not what we do. And sure, if I can figure out a way, general contractor-wise, to build out a location for a hundred and twenty thousand instead of a hundred and sixty thousand, you bet. I mean, I'll do it in a second. But our build-out is very, very quality. When we first looked at doing this, I went to Chicago at some of the bigger players, the gentleman that was here two weeks ago representing Blackhawk. And I looked extensively at their locations and everything else, and I kind of rated the, the build-outs of a one to ten and, and looked at their build-outs of Emmas and some of the, they have other names or whatever, but, you know, their build-outs are nine to ten. I mean, it's a real quality build-out and they run a really quality place. And that's what we aspire to be, kind of their little brother, if you so to, so to speak, but, because I'm not going to put anywhere near the number of locations they have. But I look at some of these other locations and, you know, that's where you get back into the black eye a little bit because there's, I, I say they're somewhere rated like three to four build-out at, at best, and that's when they're new. And, you know, and that's the other thing, I see like at the Metro East, we have somebody like that. And, you know, you see a facility fine when it first gets built out and say, "Well, there wasn't a whole lot put into this," but then look at it a year and a half later and, you know, it's, it's, it continues, you know, and what used to be a four is now a two and a half. And, you know, that's, that, that doesn't do, I don't think, our industry and what I'm trying to do a whole lot of good.
Okay, thanks, thanks. I think, yeah, if, if there's any way, if we're, if we do choose to control these, if we can somehow pick the ones that are going to spend more on build-out and, and really be more of an entertainment place, that would be my preference. And just while you're here, in case we do vote, I don't know how the vote's going to go, but there's a UVA membership guide here, I'm going to pass it down, so you can be sure to join the Urbana Business Association if, if you're approved, and talks about what UVA will do for you. You can do, you can do, you can help sponsor local festivals and there's all kinds of marketing opportunities and get your name on the back of t-shirts for runs and things like that.
And we're looking to do the same thing right now in Decatur, because not only we provided a lot of tax revenue, but, you know, the one thing that we've done in those locations and what we plan on continuing to do here is we get a professional photographer, we went around, I spent, you know, and which, which people don't do anymore, I spent like three days in the Decatur Library, Pride of the Prairie, learning everything about, I could about Decatur. And we, we, we learned their history and we went around and we, we made sure, we took pictures of all the landmarks, and that's our art in, in each of our locations, is we, we specialize in Decatur and those Decatur locations, and that's the same thing we'll do in Urbana. We don't just come in and not act like, you know, I'm from St. Louis and, and I'll be here once every six months. We do try to be a good steward to the, to the, to this municipality that we're in. And again, that's, that's kind of what we set out to do. And then the last thing, you didn't ask me this, and I'll just throw it out there and then I'll, I'll be quiet and go away. But I thought about if I was in your situation, because I haven't been, and I, I hope I'm not overspeaking or doing something I shouldn't be doing by, by offering an opinion, but, because I talked to him last time too, a couple of weeks ago. But, you know, there's, I, I would say that, you know, you, you, it's interesting that you guys chose to do the G2 license. I think that's a, that's not something that we've seen a whole lot, but I think it makes sense. I think it's a sensible way to go about it. And I think if you look at the population of the city of Urbana, there may be a formula, divisible formula by stating that based on X number of people here, that we should only have X number of G2 licenses. And hopefully, your guys' ability to, to allow liquor licenses, you know, hopefully you, you, you hand them out to the people that will run as professional and proper businesses as possible. That's just my suggestion. Hopefully, I'm one of them, too, so.
I'll, Mr. Ammons has one last question and then we'll continue this discussion at the time we consider these ordinances.
And can we ask these people back?
Oh, yes. If you'll stay while, until we vote on this, please.
Because I have questions for the participants.
If that's the case, then I, then I will wait.
You'll wait? Okay.
I don't want them to slip out on, I don't get to ask my questions, I'm going to vote no then.
No, this is just public, this is public input, and so we'll, we'll, in order to get the rest of the public have an opportunity to speak, we'll come back to this right after public input.
Okay.
So if you please hold your question. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, but don't go away. Next up is Dave Monk, 115 North Market, and he wants to talk about railroad closeouts.
Interesting presentation earlier, I enjoyed it. It cries out for regional planning. You're talking about Bloomington, you're talking about Danville, you're talking about Decatur, and you're talking about various different railroad beds. I was tempted to write a few notes. One for Mr. Ammons was that Greg Lindsay, who was previous manager of the recycling center here, has become a professor of recreation, and he put cameras on a trail that went through Indianapolis. And the trail was tremendously affluent and the, the north end type communities on either side did not have a chance to, to participate. And there were a few questions like that. This railroad bed is very much like the Kickapoo Trail. When we looked at the Kickapoo Trail, we submitted about five minutes before the deadline. And it's taken twenty years, but it, it's got the potential of fast line from Chicago to St. Louis, Bloomington in the middle, and if you had active rail back, you can get into Indianapolis. So the Rail Banking Act is to preserve railroad dignity. They quiet the titles and save the bridges and give money. So a lot of the money that's coming to the Kickapoo Trail is from the Rail Banking Act. In the west side of Champaign, which tails on to some of the discussion we had before, there's three miles being abandoned between Seymour and White Heath. This is key to that regional sort of complex. You have quite a few communities that are doing very well with bicycles in town, but the connectivity is not great. And so this three miles is key. It runs from Bonneville to Seymour, Heartland Parkway zones, four miles to White Heath. From White Heath to Monticello is seven miles of railroad museum, and then we have another six miles to Cisco, then it's active bed into Decatur. The old Route Forty-Nine, which parallels Seventy-Two, is light traffic, and it could be a bicycle way right into Decatur. The line splits in Champaign, the one that you're talking about through, from Urbana to Champaign is north-southern, and the other end of it is CSX usually. It goes through to Bloomington. From Farmer City to Bloomington, there's a huge piece of railroad out that has trees growing in it, there are tractors there, and Bloomington would just love to, to have that as a trail. But it requires regional planning that's in about eight different counties. This little piece is key because it, it may allow the rail to operate. The problem is that Canadian National wants to close down short lines, there may have been main lines in the past, but this is on the old ICG. The short lines don't produce a lot of grain and there's not a lot of traffic, it's like the one through here. So they put the rent up and that line has not been used for two years, and that permits an abandonment. The deadline for the abandonment is, is various, but it's basically tomorrow. And not very many people know about it. I went to this Champaign City last Tuesday, and I'm going to you guys now, and that little handout is, is fairly brief. The hope is that the two elevators, one is premier, one is top flight, can get together and buy that line.
You have one minute, Mr. Monk.
Okay. If, if you do that, you save the bed for future generations, and I'd like you to think two hundred years, I'd like you to think outside your jurisdiction and think in generations in the future. Sometimes the bed does preserve the prairie that's alongside, so that is helpful if we can help the business to stay in action, then it preserves the dignity of the hundred feet, some of which is invaded, but that's okay. Thanks for having me.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ammons?
Because I understand the gist of what you're saying, but I don't know if I got specifically from you what you're asking us to do. specifically from you what you're asking us to do.
Well, one of the things you do is, is get Surface Transportation, which is the federal, um, Department of Transportation, to give you a, an interim trail use. That means that's, but that's the Rail Banking Act coming into action, trying to save networking of railroads. And that's why they can revert.
Okay.
Uh, you may have them for 50 years. So, uh, the, what I would ask of you is to think about, uh, applying for, uh, an interim trail use agreement. We're, we're doing that anyway, but in order to do that, you have to have Surface Transportation, an agency like Heartland Passways or, uh, Forest Reserve or whatever, and, uh, the third one is Canadian National, and Canadian National doesn't seem to want to be involved. So then the talent is to go to Canadian National and beg their ear, so that you say that over the last 30 years, we've done this and this and so, and this is the regional plan for eight counties, and this is key in that, and, and so, somebody who knows somebody who knows somebody needs to talk at the, the state and national level. You have a rail trail office in Indianapolis, I think it is, it's a Midwest office, uh, that's had a lot to do with the Kickapoo Trail. So, yes, if you're interested, call Surface Transportation and ask about it, they're the ones that control the abandonment.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, very much. Um, we have a, um, public input card from Bishop King James and Reverend, Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood. They do not wish to speak, but they wish to register their position, that they are continue to be concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problems. And last, uh, for public input is Paula Venier of 109 West Illinois Street, and she's concerned about the smoke-free multi-unit apartment building.
Hi, good evening, it's me again, Paula Venier, 109, um, me and PJ are you, and me, good night, be you, do not, she is, what she does, um, we are you, to watch you, to want, A O N S, I better, um, smoking ban, in I just, smoking in A, A. I do with, me to, to, uh, and since, since that new yawns, we have five new people that live in our building, and they have all been smokers, and we have all some pensions, but it used to be only ten smokers, now we have fifteen smokers, and we got one apartment that is still waiting to be filled on the fifth floor, and, um, I know for a fact, someone who was a nun, smoker was turned down, and we said months, um, last week, when I came home from the lobby, there was some people on the patio.
You have one minute, Ms. Venier.
And I like talking to them, but I don't like that talk, can't move, that I believe it to my body, and I do have sadness trouble, um, and they were sitting on the patio, I said, did fifteen feet away from the dome, and they didn't, but the same, the magic men, God for them, do so device away, is on the patio, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Venier. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the Urbana City Council? Yes, please step forward, state your name, speak into the microphone.
I, uh, I'm the president of Lacy's Place. Uh, I don't know what the procedure is, so I have no idea what I'm doing. I just wanna say, come from and, uh, just tell you who I am, and, uh, so everyone know who I am, you can answer me questions. Uh, it's like Keith say, like, what we do is more like a high-end gaming places that doesn't really attract bars and restaurant owners from their profit, because these people coming here, they, they wanna like, a good place to play. Like, you go to the builder players, you go to play the builder, but you don't go to another place, like a restaurant, you don't feel comfortable. Like, if you're thirty, forty, fifty years old, you just wanna have free time, yes, go to a play, just to hang out and chill out. I mean, that's what we have, we have places where people come in and just have fun, not really just to gamble their life away, just more like an entertainment. They tell me, like, I live in Champaign, Urbana, always get back to the community, I live in here, and I'm not from Springfield, I don't know whether people get that idea, but I'm from Champaign, Urbana, I've been here, uh, I graduated from Purdue back in 2010, I worked at, uh, Caterpillar for three, four years. That's when I, uh, I saw the potential in the industry, that's when I quit my job, I started the first gaming hall in Champaign, Urbana, I guess, and, uh, at the time, the whole strip was just me and sport clips, and then after I opened, I dressed so much crowd that the entire strips and it was filled with, uh, Verizon Dish Network. I don't think it affects too much of the community nearby ours, I think it helps draw more customer in. I mean, like, is there any question that I can answer, that help you guys answer, like? Like, I always get back to my community, like, for example, half, uh, uh, half the profit, I mean, I give it back to people, like, for example, I have like extensive reward program where I give back a vacation package, I give an iPhone back every month, I give a lot of gifts back every single week almost, it's like a way for me to get back to the community. And I don't believe, like, in Champaign, I have like two places. I'm not rich like these guys, I, I'm only 27, you know, I, I build everything what I have, and I work hard for to get to where I am, and I do give back almost a lot of my money to look back to the community, and I've always been that way, so. If there's any question I can help ask you and answer?
Well, we'll, we'll be considering the ordinance for your liquor license next, so I would suggest we, uh, why don't you just sit there and?
Okay, okay, okay.
And we'll move into, uh, the next part of the meeting.
Okay, I'm sorry, I have no idea.
No, that's okay, you're fine. You're, you're efficient, you're already up here.
Thank you.
We'll go now to item number 11, which is ordinance number 2015 dash zero five, zero five two, which is an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter Three, Section Three dash forty-three, increasing the number of G2 liquor licenses for Lacy's Place, doing business as Lacy's Place. The corrected address is 110 East University, Urbana, Suite C. Uh, Mr. Madigan?
So as a local liquor license owner, uh, state law precludes me from participating in this item and the next agenda item, so I shall recuse myself.
Thank you. Are there questions for, and your name was?
Uh, David.
David?
Yeah.
And your last name?
Zha, Z-H-A-O.
Z-H-A-O, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Um, Charlie and then Dennis.
Yeah, um, um, I wanna first clarify this 500-foot issue by having Jim Simon address it. It was my understanding that, that state regulation doesn't have any distance limits. Plan Commission suggested 500, and we decided that was more restrictive than we desired, right? So that, within our prerogative, so 250. Uh, and, um, how does it apply? It only applies to G2, not to any of the G1, is that correct?
Honestly, I'd have to go back and check the ordinance, I can do that while the discussion is going on.
Okay, yeah, cause I, I was under the impression that the way it was written was that, uh, it's G2 from G2 and has no impact on other, uh, on, on a restaurant, say, locating next door and, and having, um, G2 has to be 250 feet from other locations, is that correct? But?
Again, I'd have to delve into the ordinance, I'm trying to find it right now.
Did you have something else, or did?
Well, I was gonna make a, I'll make, I'll make a statement later.
Okay.
After we get this clarified.
Well, well, Mr. Simon's looking for the ordinance, Dennis?
Um, I didn't see the, uh, site location for your proposed Lacy's Restaurant, uh, not Restaurant, uh, gaming location. So, um, it wasn't clear to me where in the Gateway Shopping Plaza this is located, so is it in the newest, um, is it in the section that's being constructed now, or is it on the west end of the, um, the plaza?
I think it's, it's the new one that's, uh, east end, so if you come in from the Rainbow Garden, Po'boy, the new strips, uh, that one, two, three, the third one.
So you're talking?
Yeah, so west.
It's on the west side, it's the, it's the, um, the section of the building that's being under construction, but not complete at this time?
Not complete.
So it's on the opposite end of the, it's on the far west side? But it is on, it's, it's on the west side of the strip mall, under construction, and you're in, gonna be in Suite C?
Yes.
Okay. So that's an uncomplete one. And do you have a security plan? Are you required to have a security plan? Do you have one?
Uh, there'd be like a security deposit?
Not a deposit, but do you have a plan? Uh, I guess what, this is a general question, is, um, are these gaming halls required to have a, a security plan? And I wonder if the police, if, uh, Patrick would, kindly would have any information for us about whether a gaming hall is required to have a, a security plan?
Initially, they're not required to have a security plan unless there is an issue. Most of the groups so far have voluntarily come up and met with the police department just to talk about what they could do to develop their relationship, but they're not required, in the liquor ordinance at least, to have a security plan until we identify problems.
Okay, and I wanna ask you a few more questions about, um, the operation of a gaming hall in general, okay? I don't know?
Sure, go ahead.
Who on staff may be helping with this? For example, um, uh, what are your hours that you expect to be open?
Eight in the morning till like two in the morning.
So all day until 2:00 AM at night? How many people, um, use your, uh, location in Champaign on a daily basis? Do you have an idea, a head count?
Roughly, um, I'm gonna say like 30 customers. Depends on like weekday or weekends. Weekdays are typically slower, about like, like 20, 30, if I remember.
Twenty or 30 a day?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you. I guess that's one of my questions.
That's it, okay. Charlie?
The section, uh, Charlie, you've asked about is actually found in the zoning ordinance. It's Section 7 dash 5 F. The following condition shall apply to any gaming hall. And in the middle of the ordinance, it provides, after we talk about, uh, daycare centers and schools, et cetera, an establishment shall be a minimum, that's a gaming hall, uh, 500 feet from any existing licensed gaming hall. So 500 feet between the gaming hall facilities, and establishment shall also be a minimum of 250 feet away from any previously existing establishment containing a licensed video gaming terminal. That could be, that would be a G1 now. Uh, said distances shall be measured as the intervening distance between one business frontage and the other business frontage, but I believe that was changed to, I believe, the, uh, doorways, but I think Libby could correct me on that.
Yeah, we have a definition for the measurement, so in summary, and this, did, different numbers were discussed, but from G2 to G2, 500 feet, from G2 to a pre-existing G1, 250 feet, plus we have distance restrictions for, um, daycare centers, schools, places of worship. In addition, the state has 100-foot distance requirement for schools and churches.
So to follow up on that then, so, so, um, a new G1 business could come in and, and locate wherever they, they really want to, uh, and, and exist, and a pre-existing G2 would simply be able to maintain its license as a pre-existing condition, is that, is that the right way to read that?
Yeah, I, I think that we were, um, looking at, um, people already existing and not, um, altering their rights, and I would also note that there are only three zones in which these are allowed. So those would be B3, B4, and B4E.
Mr. Am, oh, sorry. Mr. Ammons?
I'm just kinda speaking to what Charlie just said. A G1, my reading and understanding of this is not what Charlie just said. A G1 cannot just show up and exist anywhere, because the distance between a G2 and G1 has to be at least 250 feet, regardless of who was there first or whatever, right?
We're controlling the distances in the zoning ordinance for G2. Just gaming halls are addressed in the zoning ordinance. Um, the G1s are dealt with through the liquor codes with two ordinances, so the G1s are dealt with through the, uh, liquor ordinance and the state law distance requirements. Then when we get to G2, that was the use- Then when we get to G-two, that was the use that we felt we needed to define and to establish, um, really, there are stricter limits on the G-two, the gaming halls. And we do have those separation requirements between G-twos. We, we did not see a need to recommend separation distances between G-ones, for example, because those were always accessory to another use, like a restaurant or a bar, where the, the G-twos are standalone and we, we wanted to avoid a situation where one after the other in a strip center, you would see the G-twos.
Okay, I get it now, right. I understand.
Okay. Are there any questions for, um, Mr. Zao here? Charlie?
Oh, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Charlie?
I'm just gonna make a comment here. I think, I think, uh, you know, um, we're caught a little flat-footed a couple of weeks ago in trying to, trying to understand this, but, uh, now I've lost my notes. Uh, but, uh, we've set up a little bit of a unique system, a little bit of a level of control. We've got some zoning, we've set up G-one, G-two. We've got some provisions there. We're more restrictive than anyplace else in the state in the sense, other than those that don't allow them at all. So, we have defined this as a valid business class. And, uh, as long as the individual applying for our license, our liquor, uh, liquor license meets the state standards and our own internal standards, uh, then this is a legitimate business. And, um, uh, and if they meet the criteria, uh, uh, as a legitimate business, uh, then I see no reason not to, uh, move forward and, and allow the license. If we find that there's a problem, we have control via the liquor license to withdraw their license. So, I think that's very important. So, I'm gonna move to send ordinance twenty fifteen oh five fifty-two, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter Three, uh, Section Three forty-three, increasing the number of G-two licenses for Lacy's Place, Doing Businesses as Lacy's, uh, LLC, Doing Businesses as Lacy's Place, uh, to council with a recommendation for approval.
Second?
Moved by Charlie, seconded by Eric. Any further discussion? And the correct address for the record is one-ten East University, Suite C. Oh, we need to amend the ordinance itself for that address.
Didn't I read it as one-ten? East University?
Do we need a separate motion to amend it first and then pass it?
Well, I'm looking at the ordinance.
Yeah, we'll be passing it next week. This is the correction, this is moving it.
Yeah, I just wanna see where.
Yeah.
Well, we'll make sure it's correct next week in council, okay?
The ordinance right now, the draft ordinance, has two-oh-one East.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm moving it as one-ten.
It's good enough for us.
That's perfectly viable.
Dennis, you had comments?
Uh, yeah, I've got a question. And really, um, it's a peripheral one, but I think it's an important one, um, for me to, in the consideration, for Libby to answer. Uh, Libby, I want to know about signage for these, um, these establishments. We have signage that's, uh, applicable for the, um, shopping strips that they're in. And yet, I also, we see, um, additional signage appearing at, um, ones that we've approved already. And so, I'm just wondering in general about signage allowances for these businesses. Um, I assume that, uh, on the marquee or, uh, on the facade, a sign can be placed up with the name of the, of the building. Then do we also allow banners to be erected to, that advertise slots and, you know, lot of, well, slots and machines for gambling in addition?
Same signage requirements as any other business. The shopping centers, freestanding signs are limited, so not every business gets a freestanding sign. But there is a larger allowance for the center signage. And those are, um, depending on the length of the frontage of the shopping center. For the individual business, they have, um, allowances for wall signage and maybe awning signs, depending on the design, and those, those are all limited by size. So, these would have the same allowances as any other business. Terms of the banners, um, businesses are able to get a grand opening style temporary type of banner. And that, um, can be up for about thirty days. We have a separate permit process for that. And if the banner exceeds that, then, um, we do, we monitor the corridors and it does happen, and sometimes people put up the banners without getting the permits. And we go and ask them to remove the banner or apply for the proper permit. So, we have a process for that. But, um, you can imagine if we didn't control that temporary signage, uh, get very cluttered very fast. And indeed, as we travel the corridors or planners travel the corridors, they often find unpermitted feather signs, banners, this type of thing. So, it's, it's kind of a constant undertaking, but we will be on the lookout for those.
And then, uh, continuing in my, uh, trying to understand, you know, what's allowable in advertisement, um, then, uh, how does that, um, is there any stipulation about, um, window display, um, neon signs that advertise the activities inside? And what about A-frame sides, uh, signs on the sidewalk?
There are different rules for the, um, portable signs. There was a, a time when we did not allow those, but in pedestrian-friendly areas in particular, they're really, um, valued by shoppers and businesses. So, we do allow those in, in certain areas. I don't have my zoning code, but there's, um, you know, particularly in the downtown, certain business areas. So, um, that's one thing that's usually been really beneficial and enlivening an area. Of course, you have to keep the clear zone available for people to walk along the sidewalk. That's, that's important. In terms of, like, lighted window displays, when they're inside, then, um, they're not covered in the same way as exterior signage.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, you know, in terms of lighting, that, that is something that I'd be beginning to see more of. I notice it more in other communities. Strips of lighting, festive lighting, and we don't, um, particularly regulate that other than our nuisance lighting ordinances and our provisions there.
And the reason why I'm, since this is a discussion section of the, of our, um, conversation, uh, I guess, I guess there's sort of like a different feeling about, um, maybe the aggressive signage quality that some of these, um, gaming halls, I think, are gonna be, uh, we're gonna be dealing with. And I just wanted to get a clearer feeling of where this direction's gonna go. I think that most of the people that I've talked to in the community, uh, I've had a conversation where, well, you know, if it's, we can accept the fact that it's a business and, you know, the city shouldn't be in the business of regulating a moral activity of its citizens. But a lot of people express the feeling that, um, while we're allowing them, we don't want them, we don't feel comfortable with them shouting, uh, their presence so that it becomes, you know, the only thing you see in the shopping mall that you're attending. So, I'm trying to find out what the, what the appropriate balance is to, um, maintain, I guess, the dignity of the shopping mall without having it become, looking like, um, well, uh, you know, becoming sort of like an area that you would expect maybe in two years will be a derelict section of the city.
So, we, um, of course, we have to be content neutral, can't call out certain businesses, but car sales is another location where they're really trying to attract attention. And that's why we have prohibitions on penance and, like, the animated people or signs and other attention-attracting, um, methods that are used. Again, for grand opening, you might be able to get a permit, um, just in the beginning when you're trying to establish the business. But we do, if you look in the sign ordinance, you'll see there quite of, a lot of, um, restrictions on the types of things you might see in other communities. Um, the portable signs that are just on wheels, those, those aren't allowed. So, there's a lot of, a lot of that, um, less solid-looking signage that we do in fact regulate, so.
Bill?
Um, yeah, maybe you could help clarify the location a little bit. Do you know where they're going in? The, um, Suite C, would that be toward the center of the new part? Toward the, just, just east of center, is that what you'd say?
I'm sorry, could you, um, repeat the question?
Oh, where, where, where exactly, um, Lacy's Place, the, the storefront would be in that new section of the, the part that's under construction? Is it toward the east of center or toward the west of center?
This is at Five Points Center?
Yeah.
That would be, um, directly north of L Oasis, so that's on the, um...
No, we're talking about Lacy's Place.
Oh, Lacy's, oh, gosh.
There's too many going up.
We don't have a representative.
Okay.
It's on the west end, okay.
On the west end.
Sorry, all the names are similar to me.
The one on the very west end has space.
In the new building, right? In the new building?
The one on the very west end has a, like, a patio space in front that's like right next to Race Street. It would be great for like an outdoor cafe. Is it, it's not that one, is it? Nobody knows. Okay. And then, I think in that same part, didn't we also approve, uh, liquor license for a karaoke place not too long ago? Is that, do you know where that is in relation to this?
I'm sorry, I, I don't.
What I remember is we did, and...
Karaoke, do you know where the karaoke's going, Jim?
Okay.
Also in the new building, also in the new building, right?
It seems compatible as far as entertainment goes, I guess, to have karaoke next to it. I guess, as far as competing with Po'Boys, we can't control pot competition, but I can see that neither, neither gaming hall seems real excited about their menu. So, maybe if people get hungry after their gaming, they would still go to Po'Boys and continue their gaining, gaming. Maybe you could work out a coupon deal with them? I, I'm a little, I, I don't know, I, I like this idea of, of little old ladies having something to do. I remember growing up, little old ladies would play canasta with their great nephews and I just don't, I wish they would still do that. And, um, and maybe you could have a card game, not something you could gamble on, just a regular card game going sometime that people could enjoy too. But, um, I don't know, I guess I'm okay with these two, but I think I would keep my options open. In our, um, ordinance, it does say, we find that the best interests of the city are served by amending this and doing this. I'm gonna keep my powder dry a little bit in, in the future and, and maintain the best interests of the city whenever I can.
Okay, we have a motion and a second?
I was asking, let's call the question.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? That ordinance passes to committee. Next up is ordinance number twenty fifteen dash zero four dash zero four two, which is an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter Three, Section Three forty-three, increasing the number of Class G-two liquor licenses for Trident Partners, Urbana Five Points Commercial Center, LLC, Doing Business as Ruby's Four, five-ten North Cunningham, Suite Number Twelve. Charlie?
I'll move to send this to council with a recommendation for approval.
Second?
Moved by Charlie, segmented by Eric. Further discussion?
Yes, I would like to call the gentleman back up so I can ask my questions, please.
Mr. Tapman and Mr. Renshler?
Both of them, that would be fine with me. So, first of all, I would, to, like, join Bill and the rest of the council members and thank you for coming back. This, obviously, this has been moving pretty quickly for a lot of us, the G-twos, the gaming halls, and there's a lot of history about protecting the integrity of the culture of Urbana. And so, um, this is moving pretty quickly for a lot of us. So, I really appreciate, though, you seem to have a firm grasp on this and I feel comfortable asking you questions, 'cause I think you have the ability to answer some of the questions where other people have come through and I think they've gotten their license and maybe they didn't get grilled the way that you're getting grilled, but I think it's for a real, a good reason.
Okay.
So...
Thank you.
I do like the idea, it was something similar, I'll go ahead and address this, that Bill raised, is there some sort of agreement or synergy that you have that you can openly have with Po'Boys or with some other entity in the area to, uh, encourage your clientele to, to do business with them? Do you have something like that in some of your other places?
We have some marketing, um, cross-promotional type things, and we're open to doing that. Again, although we're both, at the end of the day, going after a certain segment of the population that enjoys sitting down and, and doing recreational gaming. They probably, truth be told, bring in a different demographic overall than, than we probably do, um, at least consistently. So, it's, it's certainly not something that we would be opposed to. And, you know, you asked the question, you guys asked the question of David earlier, but, um, you know, we try to drive traffic into our facilities, to expose our facility to people so that they see the environment and, um, if it's something to their liking, they enjoy it. So, you know, if we can bring fifty to a hundred people through the, the doors day in and day out, that's, that's a positive for us. And, um, we, I'm not just saying this to get a license. I mean, I, you know, I, we'd like to be good neighbors. And the success of our neighbors around, I don't, I don't know that people in the Five Points Center at this point, but I hope we end up having some synergy and that we all enhance each other's business. My wife's originally from, um, Mexico and, um, you know, that, that center is, is kind of anchored by a Mexican grocery store. And then also, I guess, a Mexican ice cream place that was here two weeks to speak against my business. And, uh, you know, but, you know, there's a lot of, they don't know that, you know, I, I, my wife's Mexican and, you know, we, we've been in their place and that was one of the things that intrigued me about the center originally, um, because we're always looking for things to, uh, buy that we can't find at Schnucks and Kroger's and all that kind of stuff.
So, you don't have any problem with the, this demographic of thirty-to-eighty-year-old women sitting down eating popsicles while they play the gaming machines or something like that? You wouldn't have a problem with that?
As long as we have napkins around the machines, so they don't hurt.
Well, I just, I mean, I, I understand that some of the other businesses, that maybe a G-one or someone who has, uh, the machines also, maybe you're not working with them directly because there may be some competition that's going on there. But the places like L Oasis or other places that do not have that, um, certainly you could, I could see some sort of, um, partnership to some degree there, which would be, would help create business for everybody. One of my other questions is, um, what, like, what materials do you need that might cause you to buy from local businesses? Like, what your, the operational needs for a gaming hall? Is there something that would make you need to buy materials from some of our local businesses?
So, in other words, business to business, you know? I've, I've thought about that. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Unfortunately, in Urbana, we don't have a lot of choices, uh, than Armstrong lumber for building material, uh, which they could apply the steel studs and the drywall. Everything else will come from Champaign because that's where it's at, it's not over here.
But it's still, I mean, it's local in the sense that it's Champaign, it's Urbana, it's Ran Toon.
Well, everything will be bought locally in Champaign, Urbana. But if you're just talking about Urbana, we got one choice right now, which is Armstrong lumber.
Okay, from a construction standpoint?
Right.
But even from a day-to-day operational standpoint?
And that's what I was gonna say, is from, um, and we kind of learned that in Decatur. I had long-term, uh, relationships with, for example, an insurance company. And so, easy, I just go to a guy I already know, we're friends and, and this is what I need. And then when we had our grand opening in Decatur and joined the Chamber and all that kind of stuff, um, you know, I was, next thing, you know, I'm, I'm talking to an insurance guy from Decatur and he's gonna ask me, well, you know, you come in here in Decatur, how come you don't buy insurance from us and all that stuff? So, um, we're looking when renewal time comes to do exactly that, um, as long as the rates are competitive. If they're not competitive, I won't do it. But, um, I'm certainly open to, to working with local business people. I said earlier too, from a marketing standpoint, a lot of our, um, competition doesn't do this. I know, uh, David has in Champaign, put, he, he used billboards. And, I mean, we've done a number of things with local businesses. We've done radio advertising, we've done tel, uh, television ad, um, we had, uh, three billboards, um, we've done, you know, some other kind of different things like bus benches and things like that. We've done, you know, some other kind of different things, like bus benches and things like that, but, you know, we definitely put money to work in the community that way also.
Who services the machines?
Illinois Gaming Systems, that, the partner that I talked about, that we chose to work with. That's their part of the business, and they get a percentage of the revenue also. They take care of the investment in the machines, the placement of the machines, the maintaining of the machines, and we don't like our employees touching cash, so we put a sixth machine in our locations, so that people who are playing, they get a voucher, they go to the machine, put the voucher in, their money spits out, and that's it. So they're responsible, Illinois Gaming Systems is also responsible for maintaining that machine and armored cars and making sure the cash is in there and all that, that type of thing.
I think we already touched on this, that you guys are not touting your menu, so I guess I won't ask what's on the menu.
But we're not running away from it either.
I understand, I wasn't trying to say that, I'm just, you know, because I was just speaking to, trying to speak to the concerns that Po Boys or some of the other places would raise about the menu and stuff like that.
We would love to promote, if Po Boys, for example, had a promotion going on or something like that, we would have no issue whatsoever promoting their business through the patrons coming into our doors.
So, now this one is a little different for me, because I look at some of the concerns that we have about gambling or, and who it impacts, and so, primarily individuals who are low income, who are looking to strike it rich, are the ones who sort of de facto, I guess I shouldn't say that word, but I'll just go ahead and be frank, it's almost like another tax, for instance, for poor people who are trying to find a way to get out of poverty or to try to address their everyday means. I'm interested in the racial demographics of the people who come into, into your establishment. I know that you guys have looked at gender, you've looked at age, do you look at race? And do you look at, I guess there's no way for you to tell about the socioeconomic status, but with race, ethnicity, you should be able to tell?
Well, again, but every, I would never want to make the, the step of stereotyping real quick, which is, I think, what you get into right away. In my Decatur locations, again, depending on where we're at in that city, the one location that we're in the southwest portion is a more, you know, nicer housing, that sort of thing, and it, probably the demographic that comes into there is more white. We're in kind of the central north part of Decatur, and that is definitely a higher African-American population that comes into that facility. But socioeconomic, you know, again, that's stereotyping, I have no idea. I can make kind of assessments on female, male, on old, young, and that sort of thing, but I, I can't on...
Well, I'm not, I'm not asking you to put yourself in a position where you're making a stereotype. I think that we have enough data in the state and across the country that shows that primarily, if you see a large number of African-Americans purchasing or frequenting a particular business or whatever, I'm just saying that the population is going to say that, here in Champagne County, for instance, that if you start talking about low income, a large portion of that is going to be African-American and people of color. So I don't think that we're stereotyping from that particular regard. I'm trying to speak specifically to what the impact would be on lower income or African-American community as it relates to gambling, and I'm wanting you to expound to some degree on what your experience has taught you or shown you about that.
Okay. To the best of my knowledge, I guess I would just expand on what I was originally saying right here, is that, you know, our, our location in the southwest part of Decatur is predominantly more white. The other location I was talking about, in north-central Decatur, is more African-American, and quite honestly, the far north location that we have in Decatur is, has a lot of Asian population coming in there. So, I, I'm not sure how to quantify...
Okay.
...an answer for you that you're probably wishing I would, I just, I'm not sure how to do it.
No, that's fair, I think you've done a good job of sharing that, to answer my question.
Trying.
And the other one, I think is actually a question I had for, for staff in relationship to, I think it's pretty clear, but we, it sounds like we have some different restrictions on G2s than we do G1s, but the liquor license aspect of it is the same, is that correct? Like, if there's a limit on how many you can have in a G1 establishment, the same thing applies to G2?
All liquor licenses in Urbana, whether they're G1, G2, A's, whatever, they all are limited, they're all capped. And what you essentially do, even with these two applicants, is you decide whether or not to increase the number by the number of applicants.
No, no, I'm speaking to consumption of alcohol in the establishment. And it, there's some sort of governing rules that we have, or that bar owners are responsible for, I mean, if I see somebody intoxicated, they've had too many, I'm supposed to stop them, nothing like that? I'm getting a yes and a no, I'm just trying to...
Our ordinances don't govern consumption wherever it occurs, restaurants, bars, VFW Hall, G2s or G1s.
Okay.
That would be governed by the proprietor or the owner, and to the extent there are state laws, they would govern, but our ordinances don't govern that.
Okay.
Eric?
So I'm not speaking from experience, but I just asked Professor Google, and Professor Google says that there's no correlation, at least in the study that's cited here, no correlation between education level or family income with incidents of problem gambling. Males are more likely to be problem gamblers, single people are more likely to be problem gamblers, people who have alcohol problems are more likely to be problem gamblers, but there's no correlation with other drug use.
I guess that's pretty interesting, that we would require that there be a liquor license for you to gamble then, right?
Well, that was the state of Illinois's wisdom on that. Any other questions for our, I was gonna say witnesses, I probably feel like it. Dennis?
Great, this is gonna be a bit easier perhaps. I was very, I wanted to ask about how the payoff was handled, but Erin mentioned that, and you answered it, so I appreciate that. I guess I was concerned about, you know, handling cash in the premises, and you say that you avoid that.
Absolutely.
And, and are, so then I also assume that, that the machines are not fed by cash, but they're fed by credit cards? Or is that...
No, they accept cash.
They accept either or both, or...
Just cash.
Just cash? Okay, so nobody's gonna be...
But they can take the, the credit card can be put in the ATM machine, and you can gain cash, put it in the machine.
Oh, so there'd be, there'd be an ATM machine in the establishment, and you could...
That's the same machine that I was talking to you, that people, once they're done gaming, and they have $27.42, they go over to the sixth machine, that's not a video gaming terminal, and it's the ATM machine.
It's an ATM machine.
And it'll, that'll print out, excuse me, spit out the cash and the change.
And we found out that our security program is not required, do you have, do you have security cameras in the building?
Yes.
You do. How many people visit your establishments in the day?
I just answered that, we try to push, try to get at least 50 to 100 people through our doors on a daily basis.
Okay, and the hours of operation you intend to hold at this location?
I believe, and I can answer this, make sure that I'm correct, but my belief is 7:00 AM to 1:00 P., 7:00 AM to 1:00 AM. And on Sundays, it changes to 10:00 AM to midnight.
Okay, just a minute, 10:00 AM to midnight. And do you have an idea of when you see the most activity? Is it in the evening, or is it during the daytime?
You know, probably more in the evening, and, you know, if you were gonna throw out the days of the week, Friday's number one, Saturday's number two, so that gives you a pretty good indication of that. And then, it can kind of vary between the other days, Sunday can tend to be a slower day, and Monday also, so it's kind of like a Friday, Saturday, Thursday, Wednesday, Tuesday type deal. But probably, you know, more in the afternoon and evening hours.
Okay, and I, one of the reasons why I asked that is that, okay, so we have an individual who's running what they feel is a family ice cream store near, next to it, and I'm just trying to understand what the, what the cross, cross-travel would be between customers in two different locations on the same strip, so. And I did, you know, and I do appreciate the fact that, that the individual came to speak to us two weeks ago and had concerns about the effect on children, was a sincere concern for him. The fact that you have a family member who's also Hispanic, and it is, it is a business block that has several Hispanic-themed businesses in it already, is interesting. However, I doubt that your wife will be running the operation, so...
She won't.
That's right, so I'm not sure that really is a moderating feature or not, but it's interesting to hear. Okay, thanks.
Probably shouldn't have said it.
Don't know, you know, I mean, it's interesting to hear, so, I mean, maybe it might mean something to somebody. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We have before us a motion and a second. All, any further questions? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Why, I forgot to say aye, aye. All those opposed? Okay, this motion is sent to council with a recommendation for approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your patience.
My pleasure, it was a learning experience.
For all of us.
Thank you very much.
Two-minute recess? Okay, next up on the agenda is ordinance number 2015-05-048, which is an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 10, Section 10-50, and it's related to pollution control facilities citing Mr. Scott Test, Sustainability Manager.
Good evening. This is an ordinance to amend the city code to bring it into conformity with recent changes in state statute. The state requires every municipality to undergo a specific prescribed permitting process for any facilities that meet the definition of a pollution control facility. So that's facilities such as landfills and waste transfer stations. So, the state recently removed construction and demolition debris recycling facilities from the definition of pollution control facility, and so we're amending our ordinance to be in conformance with that.
Any questions for Mr. Test? Charlie?
It's a no-brainer. I move to send ordinance number 2015-548, and we're in amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 10, Section 10-50, pollution control facility citing to council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
Second, by, is it Mr. Ammons?
Sure.
Moved by Charlie, seconded by Erin. All those in favor, please, oh, you got a comment?
I do, I have a question. So, hey Scott, just a quick question, I mean, I have no problem with this, I think it's great, but does the, does the state allow for a separate and more lenient permitting process for construction debris landfills?
I suspect that that would qualify as a pollution control facility, and so it would have to follow the same procedures as all the other pollution control facilities.
Even though the materials would largely be the same as what would go through a recycling facility?
Right.
These are actually quite popular in lots of other places in the world, and it's frankly too bad that we haven't adopted that kind of thing here in the United States. I mean, of course, we want to encourage recycling of as much of this material as possible, but it would also be a great benefit if the state would recognize that some of this stuff's gonna end up in a landfill, and it ought to have less permitting than, say, PCBs.
Any other comments? Questions? Okay, all those in favor of sending this to council with a recommendation for approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? That passes. Next up is resolution number 2015-05-024R, which is a resolution to authorize and ratify the execution of an amended intergovernmental agreement concerning the area-wide records management system between the City of Urbana, City of Champagne, Board of Trustees of the U of I, Champagne County, including the Sheriff's Office and Village of Ran Toole. Chief Connolly?
Thank you, good evening. This amendment actually is being updated from 2002, where the Sheriff's Office in Ran Toole were not involved in this process, so this actually draws all the police agencies in Champagne County under the same records management system, so that all that information can be shared. The rest of the information is available in the packet, if you had any questions.
Any questions for the chief? Bill?
Just, on ARMS in general, I know it's an older system, it's, it's, I'm kind of curious if it's coming to the end of its life and what, I know other, other agencies involved are probably starting to look at other systems, and what more can they do, what kind of planning do we need to do for that?
And that is something that we've talked about, actually, fortunately Sanford Hess is here tonight, who can be the IT guru, who can address those types of questions, but those are things that we are, as a law enforcement community, addressing now.
So I have kind of a unique perspective on this, because the City of Urbana is the vendor of ARMS. We're the people who run and run the software and manage it and take, take charge of further changes. Chief Connolly is my client, so he's entering into an agreement with us as one of the users of ARMS. ARMS is a system that dates back to 1988, and in fact, you know, has been in use and growing since then among the different agencies. This year, in the past 12 months, we actually put Ran Toole on, and the sheriff's deputies are both now using ARMS as well. So actually, ARMS is growing in terms of its user base. The vast majority of the data entry in ARMS is character-based, so if you've, you know, seen screens that are black with green letters on them, that's the way that people do the entry. But it's actually a very efficient way to do data entry, and for the people, the records clerks, who actually are doing this constant data entry, you know, all the time, tickets and traffic accidents and all their information, it's a very fast way to do it. So, we actually have built web front-end screens for them that you would use a mouse and keyboard for. They prefer to use the other screens because they're faster. Some of the things that we've done to make ARMS, so I guess the bottom-line answer is, yes, it's an older system, but there's nothing wrong with it, per se. It's doing the job, as far as I can see, it's doing the job it needs to do. We are making improvements in multiple areas. The biggest thing that we've done the past year is provide a lot more of reporting capabilities. So in the past, there was a lot of data entry going on, but not a lot of ability to get at that information. So we focused our efforts on trying to give people access to all the good records and information that we've got. So I actually feel like there's a good life left to ARMS, but at the same time, especially recognizing that ARMS is one system of sort of a, several pieces of software that the police department uses, including the MetCAD, the 911 system. So we have to work with changes that are going on and be open to possibilities. So we have an eye on the future, we, you know, are thinking about the long term, but I see ARMS being, you know, in the here and now, it's, it's a good solution for certainly a number of years to come.
Follow-up, Bill?
Follow-up, yeah. Are there any, like, novel methods of access, or anything patentable in that, that we should patent or have at least intellectual control over, so that if we do need to transition to another system, there might be a sale possible, or some kind of combination of our system with another system?
I'm not aware of anything that we're doing that is exceptionally novel, and, you know, and there might be a market for ARMS. You know, something people have joked about is, you know, marketing ARMS beyond the sort of Champagne County zone. It's not anything that we have a desire to get into, but certainly there could be possibilities there.
Okay, thanks.
Charlie?
I think Bill was also alluding to the future, since this is based on, you know, technology that, and programming that is harder and harder to come by. That's, I think that's more my concern with it, and how you transition to a new, essentially, backend at some point.
That, that's, that is a concern, I mean, the technology that we're, the technology it's built on, IBM keeps releasing these big boxes that are compatible to older architectures, so we're okay... So we're okay from a hardware perspective, but it's the people that is, we do have a right to be concerned about. There are fewer and fewer people using these languages and some of the techniques. But the flip side of that is we're also using more and more modern programming techniques, and I won't get into the details because you probably don't care, but we're doing more SQL and stuff like that as part of the logic of how ARMS operates. So it's not quite as archaic as it could be, but some parts of the system really do show their age in the sense that you look at it, it's very old programming methodology.
Yeah, I keep thinking my father probably could have written that code.
Dennis?
And I'm not, when you're talking about the data entry, does ARMS also accumulate and store, like, digital imagery? And I'm thinking like of fingerprinting and other kinds of things, or is this more too complex for the data that you're collecting? Are you collecting merely text and numerical data?
Actually, the ARMS was modified a few years ago to include images. So there are, for example, mug shots that can be associated with records in that and displayed on the screen with the data. We are also talking about a more comprehensive way of sending electronic information, be they scanned documents, video files, anything else, over to the state attorney's office as part of the evidence process. So ARMS doesn't necessarily store those things, but we can, for want of a better word, grab information like that when it's being transferred over to the state's attorney. So that's, those are some of the places that we're trying to go towards making the process easier in terms of, you know, it's video files and things like that. You asked about the security cameras at the gambling establishments. You know, if we had video files like that as part of a case, we could send them over.
Aaron?
All right. So I have a couple of questions. I don't know if they will be for you or for chief. And what was your name again?
My name is Sanford Hess. I'm the IT director.
Okay. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
All right. So along the lines of storing data and information, citizens who are looking to get their arrest records and stuff like that, does that play into this conversation of ARMS at all? If, my understanding, for instance, anyone who has a conviction record, they can get that from the county, from the courthouse, but if it's just an arrest record they're looking for, they have to go to the arresting agency. So I'm just wondering if this plays, if ARMS has anything to do with that?
Do you want to field that issue? From a technical perspective or a legal perspective, I guess is the question.
I guess both. I'm trying to see, you know.
Well, ARMS would certainly maintain the data, the police report itself. That's where we store. It is a records management system.
Okay.
So from an operational end, the answer is yes. From a technical end, I'll let Sanford.
Right. And the only thing I'd say there is the county uses a separate system at the courthouse and jail, so they have their own separate software and, you know, sadly, many of the cases, we print reports that are sent over to the county and keyed back into their data systems. So there's lots of room for improvement in the process.
So, I mean, that's what I'm trying to get at, some of this, to understand sort of pragmatically how it works. So an individual who wanted that information, they would be able to get it directly from us because we store that information for how, like, way back to when? What, when did we start keeping a digital record? So would some of it still be paper copies, or was it all stored now digitally?
We are in the process of archiving all of our paper documents into electronic files, and they date back, I want to say, the late 80s or maybe 90s, and that's 100% certain.
Okay.
I think 88 was the first year that we really have the full arrest records in digital mode. And then like the chief's talking about, we're scanning paper reports from, going back even farther than that, correct?
So now, this one is going to sort of mix several different things, because of course we're talking budget stuff today, but we're, so I see here where it says that because we're the lead agency, that we have to basically have someone who does the computer and have a computer analyst or other individual who is employed by the lead agency. Is that you? Is that what you do?
No, that's not me, but it's one of the people on my staff.
Okay. That's one thing. I guess I'll come back to that one later. The other question is, what does, what role exactly does MetCAD play in all of this?
So, again, there's a process and then there's the technology side. From a process perspective, you know, the MetCAD gets the 911 call initially and is sort of the group that routes that then to the officers so they can respond. The 911 information, here's the technical answer. The 911 calls, you know, the person at the call center takes information, types it into their record, address, whatever kind of information they can gather, that information is electronically transferred over to ARMS when the officer begins writing their field report. So some of that information is brought in automatically from MetCAD.
So part of the reason that I'm asking the question is because I want the listeners, council members, whoever, to also be educated. Some of it, I'm aware of it, but the process, for instance, of MetCAD, I think there's probably still hundreds of people out there that think that 911 calls go directly to the fire department or directly to the police department when that's not the case. MetCAD is its own separate entity, is not a part of the City of Urbana.
That's correct.
Right. So when it comes to developing MetCAD or making it more of a streamlined process so there aren't as many wrinkles in the process of transferring information, do you all take that into consideration? And when you're thinking about continuing to use MetCAD or whatever, what I'm trying to get to, I want to be very straight, is that there are concerns with the transferring of information. I've heard this from police officers, from higher-level folks in the police department, and we've seen incidences where it was the Kewan Carrington killing where information did not travel the way that it was supposed to. And the incident that you're aware of, chief, that I was involved in, where information did not travel the way that it was supposed to, it changed from the initial call to what was taken by the MetCAD operator to what was delivered to the officers, which could be, could make a big difference in how something is carried out on the street. And so I was just wondering, what is the oversight or how do you all analyze the activities or the effectiveness of MetCAD when you're dealing with them as it relates to ARMS? I know you probably feel somewhat handcuffed, for lack of a better term, that you don't have another, I mean, MetCAD is the only source that we have to do this type of transferring information at this particular point. We don't have another agency that we could even look to.
Oh, no. In fact, it took years to build a consolidated dispatch center. I mean, as a matter of fact, the State of Illinois is now requiring police agencies across the State of Illinois to start to consolidate. So quite honestly, MetCAD is the state-of-the-art concept versus the antiquated, each police agency had their own dispatching center. For telephone systems, for emergency calls, for tracking, there's just so many advantages to a consolidated center. Now, there are some, the MetCAD Policy Board, there are internal operational police representatives who work on a functional basis, so there are different levels within the area police agencies that do have oversight to MetCAD and provide input and talk about radios and those kinds of issues. So I don't know if that answered your question, but.
Well, I mean, I understand that it's not your responsibility, either one of you, or I don't even think the council's responsibility to govern MetCAD, but given the importance that it means for our services in the city, whether it's fire or police or whatever, I think some sort of analysis of how effective they are and how well information is traveling and stuff like that, we're only going to get that basically from you or from the fire chief, I believe, in telling us how you all feel about that or what we could propose that would make it a more streamlined process or something like that.
We actually just had, and this is way off-topic from ARMS, but we just had somewhat of an analysis done as we were looking at resource allocation for the police department from an outside agency, from Alex Weiss, in fact, from the IDOC traffic study, who said that the MetCAD calls for service and the dispatching times were incredibly good compared to other dispatching services throughout the State of Illinois. So I guess we should probably talk more about the concerns you have about MetCAD, and I'd be happy to maybe, maybe Director Caldwell, Ralph Caldwell, would be the appropriate person, or Greg Abbott from MetCAD, the representatives from that organization, who might be able to better answer those questions for you.
Okay. My last question was in relationship to the, and I think it was trying to be spelled out in the document, I read through it, why the county doesn't pay anything into this?
Well, it's not necessarily spelled out in this document, but as you are aware, some time ago, I came to speak to you about separating the trio. In the past, the U of I Police Department, the Sheriff's Office, and the Urbana Police Department all shared one radio frequency. The Village of Rantoul came into MetCAD, and as a result of that, them joining the organization, we were able to then reduce the number of police agencies on that one radio frequency from three to two. So the University of Illinois and Urbana Police now share one frequency, and Rantoul and the Sheriff's Office share another frequency, and then Champaign has their own, which is, from an officer safety perspective, you know, night and day, having the ability to get on the radio in an emergency. Part of that whole process involved the Sheriff's Office paying a lot more for that, so when they came to the ARMS agreement to try to get a records management system that consolidated everything, there was an exchange of time and services with them for that.
I'd like to add to that, that the county has been providing a resource who's been doing a lot of the reporting work for us for a number of the past few months and will continue to. So that was part of the agreement, that even though there was no dollar amount, they might provide staff time in lieu of payment, and they have been. So, and she's really, she's been doing a great job.
And just my last comment then is that as the lead agency, it seems from reading the document, there's a lot of work that we're responsible for doing. And then you spoke of us being basically a vendor, right? So is there money that comes into the police department through ARMS that is actually, I guess I don't want to use the term profit, but is there something that we actually financially gain from this, or is it just basically covering the expenses that we incur from doing the, from being the lead agency?
I'll field that. There is a small amount of extra money that is gained from managing ARMS, which we put into the general fund. So it is actually put into the, just the general, general fund of the city.
Eric?
So will this next renewal of ARMS, will this correct, will this, will there be a correction of the situation where the county is actually re-entering things by hand?
Unfortunately, not necessarily, because there's a difference between the Sheriff's Office, who are going to be using the ARMS software, and the courts process, which is the one that's doing the re-entry. So until we really get the true streamlined information going to the courts, that will be when we really achieve some benefits. It will help now that all the police jurisdictions are on ARMS, because it can really just be one conduit for that information.
So does achieving that depend, at the end of the day, on getting the Circuit Clerk's Office to buy into the system, or how, what are the obstacles to that?
The obstacles are the always the same obstacles, time, people, and money. So they have software, we have software, making the software talk to each other's work. And, you know, it's something we've met about and talked about, but there's a lot of unknowns, and then there's a matter of, you know, time and people.
Any other questions? Charlie?
I'll move to send this to council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
Moved by Charlie, seconded by Mike. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion passes. Next up is ordinance number 2015-05-049, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 22, Sections 22-31, 22-45.1, and 22-61. This has to do with local motor fuel tax, municipal gas use tax, and hotel motel use tax. Elizabeth Hannan from Finance.
First, let me apologize for the timing. I know that you have not seen the proposed budget yet. The timing is really an issue of allowing us adequate time to be able to contact business owners who may be required to implement these taxes and for them to do the things that they need to do to implement them, such as reprogram registers, you know, become prepared to use different tax forms and such. So there are actually two ordinances here that include four different proposed revenue increases, and these are all part of a strategy for achieving a budget that's balanced and sustainable over the long term. That's something we've all talked about, and we are, you know, far from that now, and we need to do some, make some significant changes in both revenues and expenditures over the next two years to achieve that. So the specific proposals in the first ordinance are one cent increase in the local motor fuel tax. That would allow us to maintain the same level of support for transportation improvements that we are currently. We can't continue to maintain that level using transfers from the general fund. That one cent increase would be about 15 cents on a 15-gallon purchase of gas. I know for me, that's about what it takes when I fill up my car. The hotel motel tax increase would be a 1% increase. So if you put that in perspective, if you stay at a local hotel at $100 a night rate, which may be on the high end in this area, I'm not quite sure, because I don't stay in hotels here, that would amount to an additional dollar a night. The natural gas use tax is a little harder to nail down. This is basically a tax that impacts customers who are not subject to the utility tax. And so this would generally be large businesses or institutions that purchase their gas wholesale from out of state. It is then transported to them or delivered by Ameren, who collects the natural gas use tax. And this, because Ameren does not know the price that they pay, whereas the utility tax is based on a percentage of the price that they pay, this is actually based on a certain number of cents for each therm that they use. So we're proposing to increase that from 3.5 to 5 cents per therm. There's also a, well, do you want me to wait to talk about the second ordinance or just give you the whole?
What's your pleasure, counsel? Well, I think we have a, you need to recuse yourself on the beverage discussion, right? So let's do the first three.
Okay. Got it. I think that covers it.
Counsel questions?
I don't know if, yes.
Aaron?
I don't know if I have questions necessarily. I do think that the sensitivity of taxes requires that at least I say something about why. So this is a, it's always tough to talk about raising taxes. So when we met to talk about this, part of the reason why I was open to this is that there's a, we're not looking at all of us as Urbana residents being responsible for the increase, because this hotel motel tax would be, for instance, picked up by a lot of people who visit the city from different events and things like that, as well as the motor fuel tax and things like that. And quite frankly, we have to make sure that we are trying to cover this shortfall in the, that we foresee coming, whether it's at the state level or even possibly with the car hospital situation. So I just think that it's important to kind of put some of this stuff out there for people to have an idea of what we're thinking about.
Aaron?
Yeah, I will support this for pretty much the same reasons that Aaron is. I will, I have a different, slightly different perspective or maybe an additional perspective, because I think that except for the motor fuel tax, these are, these taxes are relatively progressive. They'll fall more on people with higher incomes than lower incomes, and that will, in a small way, redress what is a pattern in statewide of a regressive tax system. I just hope that when people look at this, they will appreciate that we are doing this in lieu of dinging them more for, you know, in lieu of the property tax rate.
Charlie?
And to add to that, those two perspectives, I'll go one step further. I started asking people how they felt about the local motor fuel tax, and people understand that fixing the roads makes it easier on their cars. So, yeah, we collect a little more money on the fuel tax, but it, it does result in a little less wear and tear on your car as you go over the many potholes that we have. And people would like to see their potholes fixed. So, without, without getting this, without, without raising some more revenue there, we won't be able to do that. I think more importantly too, though, is to understand that, that the city has cut its expenses each of the last, I think since the recession, we've, we've cut quite a bit, and I, I'd like to get a historical view of that at some point. But we did get a spreadsheet, I think, is there, I don't know if there's a, there might be a printed one, but I know that we got a, a spreadsheet of, of the cuts that are, that are underway and in thinking. And so, they total almost half a million dollars, and they, they, they leave some positions vacant, they cut travel, they cut computerization issues. So we have to do, do more with, do more with older equipment and with, with fewer people and that sort of thing. So, it's going to have an impact. We've done this for, is it four years in a row now, Mike? Five? How many years in a row? Three or four, five? It's been hard to, since the recession essentially, right?
Right.
Yeah, and so, we haven't increased, I don't think we've increased personnel really since 2006, 2007. So, we've held the line there. So I think we're trying to be responsible about how we, we go forward, cuts are being done, and, but we, we have to raise revenue, because the expenses just go up faster than, than, than the revenues coming in.
Dennis?
And making an agreement to all those comments, I'm ready then to, to recommend that ordinance 2015-05-049 be sent to City Council with recommendation of approval.
Second?
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Charlie. Further discussion? Bill Brown?
Yeah, I, I think it's important to recognize that we are making the cuts, and also how much the costs have increased, and we approved the new labor contracts, that's 2.75% this year, and again next year. And because of that, I went back and looked at how much, what percentage of our operating budget was taken up by public safety, which is mostly labor, really, especially police departments, almost all labor. So in, in the early 2000s, it was 41%, and now it's between 50 and 55% of our budget for police and fire. And you can, Public Works, I think, stayed pretty constant, about 21, 22%. So the decrease came in the other departments, Finance, Administration, Community Development. Does that sound about right? Elizabeth, have you looked at any of those numbers?
So you're talking about historically?
Yeah, like over the last 10 to 15 years.
Yeah, that, that's a little hard for me to comment on with my six months of experience.
Yeah, I just looked at the operating budget for that time. So, I think some, some of the departments are really stressed, and others, we don't have much choice as far as labor costs go. So it's, I think the frustrating thing for me is just really the lack of information on our financial picture the last couple of years, and I know that's starting to be addressed, and I really appreciate that. So, I'd almost like to wait till we get more into the budget to see if there's anything any of us think of as far as revenue sources and/or additional cuts. But I did have a couple of specific things about revenue sources I just wanted to ask. One, I think we had talked about putting meters on, in some of the other streets around the hospitals, like Clark Street. Do you know where that is?
I don't remember that specifically, but, but perhaps if it's warranted by the demand for parking, we could look at that. We're also going to be implementing a pay-by-cell system, and I think our parking rates at the meters have not been increased in many, many years. And I think once we provide an easier way for people to pay, so that they don't have to carry around rules of corridors, we may want to at some time in the next couple of years, looking at the rates for parking meters.
Just one other question, I guess more for Jim maybe. As far as eventual revenue from Carl, I know they've offered to make some payments, and we probably have an idea of what they should be paying. Is there any way the city can accept anything while any of the court cases are going on?
I would probably have to defer to Fred Grosser's handling that, but I think as a policy question, it's hard to take one position and then basically cave in to what Carl calculates as a reasonable fee, rather than what we calculate as a reasonable fee for those services. So I think the policy, though I've not been part of that process, that's been between the mayor and Fred Grosser, I think the policy of not accepting those checks is the right policy. This, this suit has to be resolved sooner or later, and then the parties to the suit can move forward.
Okay, thanks.
Eric?
I, I guess I would, I, I think that once we've got the technology in place, we might, as you, as you are suggesting, turn to the question of parking rates. I don't know anyplace else, anywhere, where you can put 25 cents in a meter and get an hour's parking.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. Madigan?
Well, I have a little comment to that. Part of the reason that Champagne and other places can charge higher rates is because people actually want to go there. So, you know, no offense to our hometown here, but there are lots more shopping options, lots more restaurant options, lots more entertainment options in other places, and therefore they can command a higher, I mean, it's all about the market. So if we want to have higher parking fees here, let's develop a community that more people want to come to. With regard to, to what we have before us, what is the, what is the total amount of, of additional taxes, we're asking?
Between the two ordinances, it would be about $858,000.
Okay, and then so you add to that, the fee increases that were previously approved for, at least for public notice, and that would be?
That would, that would be about another 250 if you count the inter-fund transfers. So we're a little bit higher than?
I think the fee increases were more than a quarter of a million dollars.
Well, we're, I guess specifically, I was thinking about the general fund, so some of those affect other funds.
Yeah, but it's all taxes and fees, right?
It was probably about half a million dollars total.
Okay, I still think that seems a little light. I was thinking it was more in the $800,000 range, but my other issue is too, okay, so when we, when, when we individually met with the mayor for her to kind of lay out some of these things, my suggestion to her at the time was that I understand that there needs to probably be some adjustments to taxes and fees, but at the same time, I suggested to her that there needs to be a serious effort to make, to make reductions, cuts to the budget as well. And I suggested at least a one-for-one, dollar-for-dollar. We got a document today, which is a bit short of a half a million, so I don't think we're much more than 25 or at best 33%. 30, 25 to 33 cents on the dollar or so. So, I think, here's the problem in my estimation. The only way that we, long-term, can grow this community and, and have a prosperous community is, is to expand it. And we're not going to do that by coming back to the well every year and increasing taxes. And we seem to be in the mode of doing that. So, my concern here is, and I, believe me, I appreciate what you've been doing over the last several months in your role here, and I think things are going to get much better as far as reporting, as far as planning, and the council having information. But my problem here is twofold. From a policy perspective, we need to grow ourself, ourselves out of this fiscal dilemma we see ourselves in. But equally as importantly, I think we need to be talking about budget efficiencies before we ask for more tax dollars. And so this is the second document that's come before the City Council, the, the second set of ordinances that has come before the City Council, asking for higher taxes and fees prior to any, any formal proposal, any formal presentation before the City Council about what we have done to reduce expenditures and to control expenditures. So, with that, at this point in time, I, I will not support the ordinance. I believe that these types of discussions should be had after the budget presentations.
Charlie?
I think one of our intentions is to try to hold property tax as close to constant as we can, not raise that. We're, we're putting the burden on very specific areas that we think can take additional burden. We have cut half a million, but ultimately it comes down to the fact that we approved raises for our staff, police, fire, public works, and so on. And those rates were, those raises were negotiated, we have to honor them, and unless we are willing to cut police and fire, and cut the number of people patching potholes, we've got to find some money somewhere, and we are making cuts, on the other hand. I'm sure that more cuts can probably be found, and that will be a challenge, but our, you know, Bill's, Bill's number is very good. It, you know, if, if police and fire have gone from 41% of the budget to 55% of the budget, I think you can see where our money is going. And so, I don't think we have any choice but to come up with very targeted, very carefully thought-out ways of raising revenue, at the same time making cuts that we can, versus cutting police and fire. And so, you know, if, if you're ready to do that, Mike, that, that's where we're headed. You know, that's, that's what we'd have to do to, to meet the goals that you're setting out.
Mr. Madigan?
Well, I don't think that's any kind of goal that I just set out. The goal that I just set out was, how about we have a discussion about the city's expenses before we go to the taxpayers for more money? And we have this backwards process here, where we want to talk about revenue before we even sit down and have a formal budget presentation. That's my objection. My objection is to process here, first and foremost. I'm painfully aware that we're in a situation where we have union contracts that we need to, that we need to fund, and I'm not suggesting, suggesting that we don't fund those. What I'm suggesting is that we ought to be looking at the budget and every line item of the budget to see where else we can save. I can point out one for you right now, but it's not going to save a lot of money. I can't understand for the life of me why we are spending one penny on public art in this city at this point in time, when we have much more pressing issues. People shooting each other is way more important than a sculpture. That's just one example, and I think we ought to look at lots of other things, but I have no idea what those are. We ought to have a thoughtful conversation about what are the, what are the things in the budget that we can put on hiatus for a period of time, so we can fund that contract without asking taxpayers for more money.
Aaron?
So I will say that I, I would, I would like to ask you to expound on the timing issue that you were speaking to early on about why this will be presented before the budget.
Well, let me be clear. I would never, under normal circumstances, recommend doing it this way in this order. However, I've been here about six months, we're still wrapping up the audit from last year, there are many things that are behind schedule, there are many things that we're working to correct, and so it won't happen this year. I would not do it this year if I really had an option. I, I think, you know, my preference would be to always give you the budget picture before we would talk about revenues, or before we would ask you to approve revenues. But legally, we have to adopt a budget before the end of the fiscal year, and, you know, potentially we could delay some of these items, but we do need a certain amount of lead time to be fair to the businesses that are going to be impacted if we do these tax increases. They need time to know what's coming, to implement the changes. And so, I think, under the circumstances, this is, you know, perhaps the best we can do.
So I, I would say that I think that the, that the public deserves as much time to adjust or to comment on some of the things that we're bringing forth as the businesses do, right? And so I do feel like that just the phone calls and things that I've gotten, ever since it sort of, people came, it came to their attention that they were going to, these votes were going to take place, they're upset about various different things. And so, when you talk about businesses getting X amount of time, I don't know how much time that is they need to, to do, to make their changes, I think the public deserves a certain amount of time also to, to speak to some of the concerns that, that they're going to have to deal with. And I am, from a principle standpoint, I think Mr. Madigan is right, you've already agreed to it, that typically we would get the budget first, and then talk about revenue and, and those types of things. And I also want to say that I don't, I don't know if, when I look at the budget, I see particular positions, for instance, under Public Works and Community Development and Finance, and I see actual positions either being cut or not being filled, right? And I understand Charlie's point about, you know, cutting fire or, or police, and I'm not, not necessarily advocating for that. I would like to ask though, under the police department piece, it says that there's a vacant position, a 56th officer, but when I read through the minutes, it said this was sort of a over-hire position. I don't know what that means.
Well, well, it's actually an authorized position in the budget that has been filled, and so Pat, Pat may want to help me out with this, but basically, I mean, it's typical in police work that you have people gone for periods of time for duty injuries, they may get called up for military service, and so I think the original intent was to add this position, to have that kind of buffer, so that when people are not available to work, that, you know, they're not as shorthanded as they would otherwise be. I think you can easily anticipate that at any point in time, they're probably going to be short at least one officer.
So, but what does over-hi, I mean, I don't understand, like, there's a point that you said this is the number of officers that we want, and this one is one above, I mean, but couldn't you make that argument for the fire department? Couldn't you make that argument for these other departments? I mean, I don't understand why. It just appears to me as though that position is considered a buffer, but it's a buffer so that we don't have to actually cut a position in the police department, whereas other positions, other departments are actually losing?
It, it's actually a reduction in their budget, it's a budgeted position.
Right. I, I'm not prepared to discuss the entire budget tonight, but I can tell you that we were directed to cut $140,000. We, we did reduce our manning by one, our, our personnel by one person, and the way that it worked was this, and I'm doing this off the top of my head, and I'll present you with a, a much more formal presentation, but as we were directed, we cut $140,000. The way that it works typically is, we have got, in 2013, we had a series of vacancies. In addition to that, we had a police officer who was being called to the military. So he was going overseas, we were already at a personnel shortage, and typically, unlike fire or Public Works or something else, when a police officer is hired, there's a background, there's a basic police training, there's a field training program, there's a probationary period. So unlike other services where you can simply So unlike other services where you can simply walk into a position, it takes typically a year to fill that one slot. In 2013, when our personnel shortages were abundantly clear, I went to the mayor and said, is it possible? Because on average, we were losing four police officers a year. Some of them were to retirement, some were to other police agencies. In addition to that, we had a series of police officers who were in duty, on facing long-term duty-related injuries. They were injured during an arrest or something happened where they weren't able to function as a police officer. So the personnel shortages were such, compounded by the amount of time that it took for us to be able to train a single officer, the mayor approved the over-hire of a fifty-sixth position. Now, that didn't mean we had fifty-six officers working because the military member actually was on a non-paid status. So although we were able to, we had to, and I one-hundred percent support this, we held his position as the fifty-fifth Urbana Police Officer, but during that year, he was in Afghanistan. He was being paid by the military, so the city of Urbana wasn't paying him. So the mayor, although we held that slot, the mayor said we will over-hire for that fifty-sixth position. Coincidentally, in April of 2014, again, and the numbers may not be one-hundred percent correct, but off the, what I recall from later, earlier this evening, we hired, over-hired that additional officer to fill that military member slot. Unfortunately, he didn't make it through the field training program, so since that time, we have still been behind. As it stands right now, we have, we have an allocated authorized strength of fifty-five police officers with, fifty-six with the over-hire, fifty-five functional police officers. Of those, five are in the field training program, two are on duty-related injuries, one is on a long-term family medical leave status, and there are two vacancies with one pending. So although we have an allocated, an authorized force of fifty-five officers, we're actually at forty-four current, or will be by July. So those numbers fluctuate constantly, and those were the reasons why we asked to build that, that over-hire into the budget so that we weren't always constantly trying to catch up with the minimum number. Because like in anything, as we reduce our numbers and forces, that overtime is obligated when we have a series of seven shootings in three days. And now the overtime kicks in, and now the officers are working sixteen-hour days, and then they become sick because they're constantly working instead of. So this constant series of events that's taking place, we were eliminating some of that by the over-hire. But we gave that position up because the city directed us to do that.
Any other questions? Charlie?
Yeah, I guess to add to that, one of the issues, of course, becomes overtime. If you don't have enough, enough people in the system to maintain the, the minimum staffing needed, you end up bringing people back in, and that overtime is a killer. That overtime ends up costing you more than having these positions filled. And, and if you look at the overtime budget during that period of time, it was a killer, really. It, it's, it's had a real impact on the budget. But do you, we don't have any choice. Again, you know, like Bill has pointed out, you know, our budget has gone from forty-one percent related to public safety to fifty-five percent. I think that's a great number to have at our fingertips. Now, I've, I've worked with, I think, this will be my fifteenth budget on the city council. There were, there are twelve years in between there, between some of them that I didn't, that I don't have. And I'll tell you, they're not that dissimilar from each other. You can take last year's budget and look at it and say, okay, this is, these are the basic needs of the city. What do we need to cut? What do we, you know, what, where do we want to add to and so on? And, you know, our budgets have been pretty much the same year after year after year. So I think Mike's point is that there is a program that he doesn't believe in. That is, that was brought in as a new program during Danielle Chenoweth's tenure on the council. And, and so that was a new program. And it's a legitimate issue to raise, you know, do we need public art? I would argue that it is one of the things that brings quality of life to the city, adds to the city, and helps us grow the city. So it's an investment in the future. That's my point of view. But if you want to look at a budget, you want to look at next year's budget, look at the last two or three, and you can predict where we're going. So, so, you know, you already know what the budget's going to be.
Bill?
It's fun to clarify the fifty-five percent, since you mentioned it a couple times. I think it's closer to fifty percent. This year's fifty percent, a couple of years ago, it hit fifty-five percent. It might have been an aberration. But it's up from low forties to about fifty for public safety.
Mike?
And just to try to cut down on my hate mail, I'm not against public art. I'm just saying there are certain things that we ought to prioritize, and public safety, fire safety, and streets are the three priorities of city government. And beyond that, I just think we ought to take a serious look. Like I say, before we ask taxpayers to dig deeper into their pockets, and with that, I would move that, and hey, I mean, if we're all going to agree that, that we ought to look at the city budget, even though last year's city budget may be similar, I still think we ought to have the presentations. I still think we ought to see where the departments are looking at, at creating some efficiencies, then I don't know who would be opposed to holding this in committee, and so therefore I would move that we hold this in committee.
Second.
Okay. That stays in committee until our, okay. Is there any more comment on this? Bill?
What, do we have a schedule for the budget presentation? I haven't seen it.
June first.
And the auditor's report?
May twenty-sixth.
June first. And you're still clarifying our, we'll have a pretty clear, a clearer financial picture in another, by the end of the month, do you think?
Well, I think it'll be much clearer when, when we wrap up the budget numbers. And I think we'll continue to get clarity as we move through the year. We'll be looking at a forecast next year in the fall, you know, and continue to do that.
And in your memo, you said this was a two-year process and that you anticipated more revenue increases next year. Do you anticipate coming back to these same particular taxes next year as well?
I, I don't know that at this point. And, and it could be the reason why we'll continue to update the forecast is things may look better or worse. So what, so what we talked about initially, looking at our forecast, was two and a half million between revenue increases and expenditure reductions over a two-year period. So by the time we get to the second year, you know, it'd be great if it looks better and we didn't have to do, you know, the same revenue increases or expenditure reductions.
Eric, and then Bill?
So the trade-off that we're talking about is to push this off for perhaps three weeks because we could, we will not, we will see a budget, well, I guess we'll see a budget the first meeting in June? Is that?
Yes.
Okay. And so the earliest that, if, if, if we do keep this in committee and if we say we have to see a budget before we, detailed budget before we look at this, then it's really going to be about mid-June before these could actually be enacted. And they would go into effect July one?
I, I don't, I think that timing is much too quick. I mean, I think if we were going to approve these mid, so we were anticipating if we do it this month, we would make them effective August first. If we push it off a month, we're probably talking about September first.
September first, yeah.
Can you elaborate on why the delay? Why it would take that long?
Just to have time to notify all the businesses that are impacted, to allow them to make the adjustments that they need to make on their end, that reprogramming cash registers and whatever.
Yeah, well, guess what? I'm one of those businesses, and it'll take me about thirty seconds.
Okay. Well, I mean, we can make it whatever we want, but we definitely need to have time to at least send them a letter to let them know.
No, I'm not trying to be flip. I'm just saying it's, it's just a matter of programming a back office computer, and it's, it's literally a couple of clicks of a mouse. And I doubt that, I'm a pretty, pretty small business. I doubt that, I doubt that there are less sophisticated businesses out there than mine when, when it comes to this kind of thing. And so I don't, I don't think this is a forty-five or sixty-day process to implement this kind of thing.
So, just to be clear, in your opinion, a thirty-day period between voting on any tax increases and them being effective would be adequate?
Well, I can't imagine a business out there that couldn't, that is not nimble enough to, to meet that kind of a timeframe. Now, maybe Ameren, the behemoth that it is, might have a problem. But, you know, as far as small businesses go, hotels, restaurants, those kind of things, it's a, it's a very simple process.
Is there a legal timeframe that we have to give or something?
I, I don't think doing it in thirty to forty-five days would violate any legal requirements. I, I do want to say, I think for these taxes that are collected locally, we probably want to make it effective on the first of a month, whatever month that is, just because in terms of how they file their taxes with the city, it's going to be a lot less confusing.
Further discussion? All those in favor of keeping this in committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Was that a no? Was that any other no's? Okay. The ayes have it.
So can I make a motion before you even get started, Madam Chair?
A motion?
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah. I'm going to move that we, not a motion, yeah, I guess it is. I'm going to move that we also keep ordinance number two zero one five dash zero five dash zero five zero, and ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter twenty-two, Section twenty-two dash ninety-one, tax on purpose of prepared food and certain alcoholic liquor slash twenty-fifteen. I'm moving that we also keep that in committee.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that one.
All right. Further discussion? All those in favor of keeping ordinance number twenty fifteen dash zero five dash zero five O in committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay. That stays in committee for further consideration. Moving on to resolution number twenty fifteen dash zero five dash zero two five R, resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement with Habitat for Humanity of Champaign County. Kelly Murkowski?
Yes. Before you, is a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement with Habitat for Humanity. As part of the National Foreclosures Settlement Award, the Illinois Attorney General's Office secured approximately seventy million dollars and made available a request for qualifications and proposals, to provide proposals to mitigate the effects of foreclosures in the state. Habitat for Humanity, along with various other entities in the community, including Urbana and Champaign, worked together to complete and submit an application, which was approved. In the memo you'll see on page two, second paragraph, the goals identified in the proposal, as well as the areas of impact, are listed. Habitat approached the city staff to assist with the implementation of this grant. Habitat is requesting assistance with the rehabilitation portion of the grant and to serve as a pass-through for the down payment assistance portion of the grant. Through this grant, Habitat will be paying staff time for the rehab portion, and will be funding the down payment assistance portion upfront to the city. And this is Sheila Dodd, who is the executive director for Habitat, and she is here if you have any questions as well.
Any questions from council? Bill?
So these rehabs, I guess, that will be involved with one in about twenty-seven houses, would that be over the three-year period?
Yes, it will.
Okay. Thanks.
Eric?
So the city's contribution will be some staff time, but presumably that's already built into our budget, unless we slash it more than we think we will.
Well, all of our staff time is actually sustained through all of our grants. No city general fund. So, but this grant will pay a portion of our rehab coordinator's position, and that would free up our money to maybe use for other purposes. So definitely will be more staff time, so.
What is the targeted area?
In Urbana, it's Lincoln to Wright, University to I-74.
I'm a little slow. Okay, so say that for me one more time.
It's Lincoln Avenue to Wright Street.
Okay.
University Avenue north to I-74.
Okay.
Dennis?
And is there a reason why there wouldn't be segments of the east side of town included in that?
When we scheduled our targeted area, we had to make it, we had to make decisions on, on where we could show the biggest impact. And we've already done a lot of work in that neighborhood, and it was contiguous to Champaign. So the grant covers more than just Urbana. It covers Clear to Mattis. And so that's, that's why we defined it that way. It was an.
Because my, in my observation, there are certainly properties in East Urbana that would be highly likely to be included, should you had thought in that term.
Yeah, I, I agree. But the areas targeted, the targeted area for this grant are Lincoln to Mattis.
Charlie?
I move to send this to council with recommendation for approval.
Second.
Was that second by Eric? Okay. Moved by Charlie, seconded by Eric. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Last item on the agenda is ordinance number twenty fifteen dash zero five dash zero five one, an ordinance, further amending ordinance eighty-four dash, or eighty-four, eighty-five dash thirty-eight by extending the term of the Urbana Enterprise Zone an additional six months. Libby Tyler?
This ordinance would provide a stopgap to extend our enterprise zone for an additional six months, and this will be important in the event that our current application for new enterprise zone is not accepted in the first round. So this provides that the longest stopgap that we can have. So it's a precautionary, but it would need to be approved in this form.
Questions for Libby? Is there a motion? Dennis?
Yeah, I, I think this is reasonable and understandable. Boy, I sure do hope that the state approves the enterprise zone that we've applied for because it's far-reaching and totally useful for the community. But in the meantime, I'd like to recommend ordinance two thousand fifteen oh five oh five one to the city council with recommendation of approval.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Charlie. Any further discussion? Aaron?
What does increment generated mean?
If there are improvements to property, the assessment goes up and the taxes go up. That's the increment.
Okay, so.
Above the base.
Above the, so it's not that this, whatever developer, whoever it may be, there's a base that everyone pays, including this, whoever the company is, and anything that they make above that gets.
Right. It's to incentivize the improvements and then to increase the tax base over time.
So they don't get, they're, they're still paying some taxes?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. And I think I, Jim, is there a way, I think we talked about this already, but there's no way for us to require that the materials and stuff be purchased from local vendors or local businesses or anything like that?
I, I think a, there could be, assuming the resources are there, but in terms...
But in terms of some of the other issues we've talked about, that could be a problem.
So, the Enterprise Zone Act, this is all pursuant to statute, used to favor the sales within, would have been Champaign County, and that is no longer the case. So there's statutory reasons why we can't require those sales tax exemptions to be right in our area.
Further questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. With no further business before the committee, we are adjourned.